Okay, Steve is here. Okay.
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Good morning. Good evening. It's Monday, May 9th, 2022. We are at 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the La Mita Planning Commission to order. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever.
Here.
Commissioner Santos.
Present.
Commissioner Steinbach. Commissioner Steinbach, if you're here, we can't hear you. Come back. Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Graff.
Here.
And Chair Camerata.
Here.
I'm gonna try Commissioner Steinbach again. Did someone say they had seen him on the call? No? Okay.
So we have five commissioners. Is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson's on there. I'm sorry. I just.
We have six, perhaps so join us later.
I just said, so we're good. We're just missing Commissioner Steinbach. Okay. With that said, let's move on to item number two. Item number two is oral communications. And at this point, we ask if persons want to wish the, address the planning commission on subject other than those items scheduled for, requested to do so at this time. Please provide your name and address for the record in order to conduct a timely meeting. A five-minute time limit per person has been established. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments regarding items not on tonight's agenda?
I have not.
Okay.
I've just joined us. Commissioner Steinbach just joined the call.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So with no comments, the next question, of course, to everybody, is there anybody on the meeting that wishes to comment on any item not on tonight's agenda? If you are, raise your hand as well. If not, we'll move on. And seeing none, okay, item three, consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the April 11th, 2022 commission meeting minutes. And the recommended action is to approve those minutes for tonight. So with that, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the minutes for the La Mita Planning Commission, Monday, April 11th, been approved, be approved.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have to recuse myself from that one.
Yeah. It's not a phone yet, but.
Okay. I'll second it.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Thompson and a second by Commissioner Stevens. Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call for us?
Yes, Commissioner Dever.
Yes.
Commissioner Santos.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is recused from this item. Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff.
Yes.
And Chair Camerata.
Yes.
Okay. The next item, item number four, which is the public hearing, deals with the alley vacation over 24516 Narbonne. Now, I will say before we get started that I recused myself from this item last meeting. And the action is to continue this from last month's meeting to tonight. And then the recommended action is to continue it again until June. If I'm reading that correct, Madam Deputy Clerk, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So two questions. Do I recuse myself from that vote? Or do we just want to make a motion on that vote to?
Um, Chair Camerata, this is Pat Donigan from the City Attorney's Office. Yes, you should similarly recuse yourself from that vote.
That's what I thought. Okay, so can I actually call the vote and just recuse myself?
Correct. I mean, yes, during the roll call, there's no need for you to log off and then for you to log back on.
That's what I thought. Okay. So with that being said, item four is an alley vacation. It's a request to approximately vacate 2,850 square feet of the public alley located to the south of the property at 24516 Narbonne. Request would formally convert the portion of the alley into a publicly accessible for sale. It's been discussed at the April meeting and the recommended action is to move it. So can I ask for a motion on that?
I will move that we continue the alley vacation to our June meeting.
Second.
And who was that second?
Santos.
Oh, Commissioner Santos, thank you.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, now, there's any discussion on that?
Yeah, Commissioner Steinbach, why are we continuing it?
The recommendation is from the Assistant Planner Quintero, and perhaps maybe he can answer that.
Hi.
She can answer that. I'm sorry, she can answer that for you.
Good evening. Steph is still working with the applicant to finalize plans and also working with adjoining property owners and business owners such as Green Daylight. So we just need more time.
Okay, does that answer your question, Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, before we move on, again, I'll recuse myself from this vote, but I noticed that Lorenzo Sciappa is on. Is he aware of the continuation?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion or questions, I will ask Madam Deputy City Clerk to do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dever.
Yes.
Commissioner Santos.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff.
Yes.
And Chair Camerata has recused himself.
I will recuse, yes.
Right, so this is approved 6-0. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, moving on, item number five is an amendment to a conditional use permit number 311, a request to allow the sale of distilled spirits, beer and wine for onsite consumption at a 4,391 square foot restaurant located at 1841 Pacific Coast Highway in the commercial retail zone. The applicant is Emile Lewis, and I believe he is on the meeting. And the presentation will be done by Associate Planner Laura McMoran. And if you would go ahead and make the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commission. Tonight's application is an amendment to an existing conditional use permit. And the applicant is requesting the ability to sell distilled spirits in addition to his existing beer, wine permit. May I have the next, go forward two slides, please? So a little bit of background, Good Life Cafe is operating at 1843 PCH, and they opened in 2018. They received approval to sell beer and wine at this location from the Planning Commission in January of 2019. They have also just submitted for an entertainment permit. And that will be administratively reviewed, most likely with code enforcement and planning and by the director or assistant city manager serving as the director. Next slide, please. So, you know, this is an application that's already in some ways been vetted. The, but just for those who weren't present, the general plan designates this area as commercial and the zoning designation as commercial retail. A restaurant is a permitted use and consistent with the general plan. And a sale of distilled spirits is allowed with a conditional use permit. The site has 220 feet of street drainage on PCH. It contains two driveways. There is our two buildings on the property, one, a single tenant freestanding building, and the second, a five-unit building in the rear, which the tenant occupies approximately half of. There are 30 parking stalls. There's no trigger for parking review. The tenant is occupying a former restaurant space, and so there's no change in occupancy. The tenant erected a six-foot masonry wall along the north property line between the service aisle and the residential property as part of the last CUP. And staff is proposing with this CUP that there are two new landscaping beds added in the parking lot to upgrade the facility. Next slide, please. Presently, Good Life Cafe has operating, or I should say, can have alcohol service Sunday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. And on Friday and Saturday, their operating hours are 10:00 a.m. until midnight. With the addition of distilled spirits, staff is proposing, and the applicant agrees, to curtail their hours more in line to have their alcohol service with meal times and that they would stop service at 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and stop service at 9:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. We've looked at the surrounding restaurants and have seen that for the most part with kind of one outlier of Hearns, that the 9:00 p.m., 9:30 p.m. time is reasonable and consistent with other restaurant uses. Next slide, please. So this is their proposed floor plan. And I want to, it is a large restaurant. It has a formerly a restaurant space as well that's had vacant for approximately five years. The kitchen area is equipped with, I've circled it, a large dishwashing area that has a commercial dishwasher, and this is important. So we have, you know, confidence that in addition to glassware being washed, they're going to be also having the capacity to, you know, have plates and utensils and other things washed that are in keeping with its primary purpose as an eating establishment. Next slide, please. So the Good Life Cafe has not had any specific incidents attributed to its use. Staff has spoke with the sheriff's representatives regarding the operating hours, and they felt that they were satisfactory and should not cause problems based on the service being, again, aligned with the times people normally eat. You know, the, probably the most concerning thing is, and we asked them about the part two crimes, things that might be related to alcohol, non-aggravated assaults, which are a little higher within reporting District 714. And again, the sheriff, I mean, it was kind of unequivocal. They did not find a problem with the proposed use and their shortening their hours of service of alcohol. We have added a condition that they add security cameras to the exterior, not only for, you know, public safety, but for their own personal safety as well. Next slide, please. The resolution contains a little more specificity, but the, basically, the findings for this conditional use permit are, the restaurant is a permitted use in the commercial retail zone, and alcohol is allowed with the CUP. The project is consistent with the general plan. Restaurants that offer a variety of alcoholic beverages appeal to a wide spectrum of diners, and that contributes to the success of a restaurant and then the vitality of an area. The buildings, the site and the buildings' design are oriented towards PCH, and it is compatible with existing and future land uses. And the site can accommodate the necessary development features. Next slide, please. So the code has, gives the Planning Commission the discretion to modify any distance requirements to sensitive uses. This, this location is within 300 feet of Veterans Park. It's also within 300 feet of residential uses. And it is within 300 feet technically of the Islamic Center, although that is, you know, across, across the street and really only touches on its parking area. But staff believes that this application is appropriate for a modification to the distance requirement. First and foremost, that the onsite consumption at an eating establishment should not affect public safety. That restaurants do bring vitality to an area, and this area, you know, was lacked tenant for a number of years. And that restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages are normal for today's, today's society, that it's pretty commonplace, and the restaurant has already had service of beer and wine without any instances, and they'll be shortening the hours that they serve alcohol. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopts a resolution approving the amendment to CUP number 311 with conditions to allow the sale of distilled spirits, beer and wine at the 400, I mean, sorry, 4,391 square foot restaurant, and find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. I've received no written comments or phone calls on this application, but can answer any questions. Also, both the applicant and the designer are on the call.
Thank you, Laura, for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the commission at this time?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Graff, go ahead, or Vice Chair Graff, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Laura, if I'm understanding correctly, I know you did wonderful presentation, but the, really, the only change is to allow distilled spirits. Is there any other change to the facility other than the condition, you know, the hours and the condition, the landscape condition?
Um, not, not meaningful. I would say we've added, we want to make sure that the windows stay open and that that it's not an advertisement kind of situation for certain commercial brands of beverages. You know, they can certainly, you know, describe that they have beer, wine, cocktails in their permanent signage, but we are saying that it's not an appropriate use to have that kind of, whatever it be, whatever commercial brand it might be. You know, stuck in their windows because the purpose of this is a restaurant, but they certainly can say those things and describe themselves as offering that, those products to convey to the public. So that's one, the security, and then some other minor operating restrictions on the conditions such as the hours that they can use the service aisle so they don't disturb the residents to the north. We feel like that's appropriate in this instance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Dever. Monica, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Santos.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinbach.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
No, I have none.
Thank you. And Commissioner Thompson.
No, this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very good. Well, at this point, we asked the applicant on the Zoom meeting. So if the applicant would like to speak, please do so. Remember, we have a five-minute time limit. So I will hand it over to Emile for a few minutes. So that means, Emile, you got to unclick your, unmute yourself, and if you have any comments or concerns or whatnot you want to share with the commission, there you go.
Hi, guys. First of all, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers related. Thank you, that. I, I've been in the city of La Mita for 30 years. A retired decorated marine, a retired police officer. I try to uphold the best I can. I'm not perfect. No one bats a thousand. But I try to keep incidents and things, and I know the veracity of liquor. And when people drink late at night, you know, you have to be careful. So my goal is to be careful and shut it down on time, have good events, bring revenue and new people to the beautiful city of La Mita where my kids were born and went to Narbonne and Prezident's and Narbonne. And I enjoy the, just the atmosphere in La Mita. This is my second business. Hopefully, I have another one soon in La Mita. I just chose to do that. I, you know, I, I appreciate each and every one of you guys, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm gonna make sure the city of La Mita is very proud of me and have a growing business that will employ several people, keep things moving, and, you know, it's just a good city to be in. That's all it is, you know. And I, I've been in front of you guys before, and you guys have been just wonderful. And I just don't know what else to say because, you know, I just, I just want to do the best I can. And God bless all y'all. I have, you know, I don't have much to say, but I just make sure that I adhere to what you guys say. And if you have a problem or anything, you could tell me. I'll make sure I correct everything I can. I'm not perfect, but I listen. That's one thing I will do is listen, and I'll learn and I'll do what I have to do to make it right.
Excellent, very good. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lewis. I appreciate that. With that being said, I will bring it back and now open up the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, did you receive any written communications on this item?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Okay, and if there are any other requests to speak on this item from somebody that's on the Zoom meeting, if so, please speak on this item now and use the raise hand feature on the Zoom. And I don't see any hands, so apparently, we don't have anybody as well. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And if there are no more questions or discussion items from the commission, I would ask if there's a motion and a second for this amendment to conditional use permit number 311.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving amendment to conditional use permit 511 to allow for the sale of distilled spirits and adopt the findings set forth in the presentation of staff and with the finding that the, it is categorically exempt from CEQA.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Santos, thank you. Madam Deputy City Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever.
Yes.
Commissioner Santos.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff.
Yes.
And Chair Camerata.
Yes.
That's approved 7-0. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Lewis, you will probably hear from somebody at the, at the planning department. I presume Laura will get back with you on some more details, but thank you for your presentation, so.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good luck, you, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will go to scheduled matters. We, we have item number six, which is a review proposal of the fiscal 2022-2023 capital improvement program and the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program for consistency with the general plan. The applicant is the city of La Mita. It'll be presented by Planner Laura McMoran. And the recommended action would be to adopt the resolution recommending to the city council that the projects be considered for the upcoming fiscal year 2022 to '23 and the five-year capital improvement plan for 2022 to 2027, and that they are both are consistent with the La Mita general plan and should be accepted by the city council for inclusion in the next five-year capital improvement plan. So with that being said, Laura, will you do your presentation, please?
Thank you so much, Chair. So this is something a little new for us, and if we could get to the slides. I want to note that Carla Dillon, Director Carla Dillon of Public Works, is also on the line tonight if at the end of the presentation or at any time there are questions. But specifically, if we go to the next slide. The State of California's government code requires each city to prepare a capital improvement budget, which is consistent with its mandated and adopted general plan. So tonight, the Planning Commission is being charged with finding consistency so that council can adopt the two CIPs. And council has already, I should note, had a meeting on the CIPs. It was a kind of a pre-review for discussion. And we want to know that the CIP reflects and identifies the needs found in the water master plan, the ADA transitional plan, the bike and pedestrian plan, the safety and housing elements, paving management plan. Council's identified needs for the city, residents and staffs also identified needs for the city. Next slide, please. So the CIPs are broken into six categories. You know, city buildings, parks and facilities, the sewer system, the stormwater system, streets, improvements, and the water system. Next slide, please. You know, in, in greater detail, you know, the staff report and the resolution contain the justification for the findings, but it, it associates each improvement with a specific corresponding general plan elements, policy, or action. Those justifications can be found in the resource management element, the land use element, safety element, circulation element, and economic development element. Expert excerpts were included in the staff report, but basically, you know, there's justification throughout our general plan for maintaining our infrastructure to meet the needs of the citizens, to keep pace with development, to coordinate our improvement projects, and, you know, very important to develop an adequate water system. Next slide, please. So what staff is recommending is that the Planning Commission finds that the proposed fiscal year and the proposed five-year capital improvement programs are consistent with the general plan, recommends adoption to city council, and then transmits a written report, the resolution, and finally finds that the project is, the review is exempt from CEQA. If there are questions of me about the findings, you know, I'm here to answer them. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Laura, for the presentation. Before we move on to questions or comments from the commission, does Carla Dillon, Public Works Director, have anything to add to any of the comments that Laura just did?
This is Carla. Laura did a great job presenting it. I don't have anything additional to add unless there are some questions about the, the projects and the process.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carla. Okay, with that being said, I will ask for any questions or comments. Vice Chair Graff, I know you are eagerly awaiting this.
Eagerly awaiting this?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a few questions. You said that this was new, I think, because all my time on the commission, I don't remember having to do this before. Is this a recent change in state law that it has to be done this way now? And why hasn't it been done before? I think the last I read was back in 2012 or something like that. Can that be explained, please?
I don't, you know, I can't answer when this became a part of state law. I don't have that information available. What I do know is that the city looked at what it was doing and whether, and they did decide to do both these two versions. Carla, do you have any more background on this?
Um, the last CIP master plan was done in, in 2012, so that piece of it, yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why it hasn't been to the Planning Commission before. that piece of it, yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why it hasn't been to the planning commission before. And if it was supposed to come every year as part of the budget, I don't know why that hasn't been happening if it was previously a law as well.
But it is, it is required so that we would expect to, for this to come. And I think it said that it would be reviewed every two years. So we could expect that to, to uh, continue to be, come before us.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. This has been a requirement for quite a number of years. And I think because of transitions with your directors, both on the, the public works as well as community development side, it's just something that's been overlooked, but it is both best practice, but it is required by the state to make sure there was a finding of consistency. So I would expect that you'll see this, if not every year, probably every other year as the CIP is updated for the budget.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. Uh, the other question I have, uh, one was, um, I noticed there is a quite a large expenditure uh, plan for Navy Field Little League. Has that property been turned over to the city now? And so that we would be investing this money in our own property and our own assets?
I can answer that if. We were actually on a call today with the Navy. The property has not been turned over. Uh, we're looking at a potential agreement to administer and um, serve as the, the manager of the property, but it has not been turned over and it, if you noticed, the CIP project is several years out just because we don't, we don't know um, where the funding would come from and if and when the lease actually um, comes to fruition.
Would that, Carl, would that be a lease the, from the Navy to the city of La Mita or, and, and what has happened to, and I don't know, this is before, I believe, before you joined the city, there was some discussion and it looked like it was very close to happening that Maxine Waters was going to get that deeded to the city. Uh, do you heard anything on that?
I'm not familiar with that. We've had a couple of conversations with some um, congressional offices um, to see if we could coordinate some funding. Um, the most recently available funding um, says that we need to be the owners of it to be able to qualify for the specific funding we were looking at, but um, there's certainly going to be some conversations going forward to see if we can get some help in making some of the improvements that need to be made once an agreement is reached with the Navy for that property.
Okay, now the, you say you must be the owner. Would that be, would that also include being a long-term lessee? Or less, yeah, less see?
The specific funding we were looking at, we had to own the property, but there may be other funding opportunities down the road where just having an agreement with the Navy would be able to um, qualify us for some federal funding, um, but we'll have to wait and see.
Okay, the only, the only thing, and I, thank you very much, the only thing that I would suggest uh, on this particular item is that there be an asterisk uh, so that the, the city doesn't spend money or raise money for that if we're not going to gain the benefit of that if we don't have a lease or something like that. Okay, the other item that I have is playground park equipment. Um, and it talks about a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure in fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, what park is that? Or is that uh, the money that, some of the money that's already been expended for playground equipment, the new pla, partially new playground equipment at La Mita Park?
No, it was, the playground equipment at La Mita Park was to replace um, some damaged equipment.
Right.
And I believe this has been um, funded. I'm not sure if it's through a grant or if it was money that has been designated over the years um, for replacement um, just having reached its, its useful life. Um.
For which, for which parks?
Um, I think it's for both uh, La Mita Park as well as um, Hathaway.
Well, they just spent a whole bunch of money at La Mita Park. I don't see any needing to be replaced there. But there's no grants or anything that are associated with that?
I would have to verify on that one.
Because I think that on the, some of these other issues, um, there is, this is, this is out of the general fund, it says. So where there is uh, issues with regard to whether there's grants or not, I know that it's been noted, but that's not noted on here. That's why I'm asking the questions as to where it is and what it is, because it's not defined.
Yeah, I can get some more information on that, but um, I believe it's been, uh, money has been getting set aside every year to be able to fund replacement um, and updating of playground equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Graff, Vice Chair Graff, uh, Commissioner Dever, any questions?
No, not this time, thanks.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Santos.
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach.
Yeah, just a clarification. As I understand it, we're just supposed to be making sure that these items that fall under our purview are consistent with the general plan. We're not really um, quest, well, I'm not sure if it's appropriate that we question the amount of money or where it comes from. Is that my correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We're looking at consistency, whether so like park facilities or park fixtures are consistent with the general plan. So can we find that in like the resource management element and isn't it then, but if it isn't there, is it elsewhere? And if it isn't elsewhere, then not find it consistent.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I didn't, I don't need to go back and do more homework because I, I only looked at it that way. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Stevens, any questions?
No, I kind of had the same question as um, Commissioner Steinbach, so I'm good.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and my only comment, and again, it kind of echoes with uh, Commissioner Steinbach and Brenda uh, was going to ask as well as that the role of our planning commission is just to ensure that this is consistent with the general plan at that, at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's correct. In some cases, cities have very detailed general plans. And so there can be um, more information in terms of prioritization or how things may be perceived in terms of, you know, timing. But in the case of La Mita, your, your general plan for the most part is kind of a plain vanilla general plan. So it's very generic in terms of the findings. So there's really nothing specific that we're looking for other than you know, general information to the planning commission and a general finding that it's consistent with the general plan.
Great, okay. And then my last comment is uh, to put the burden back on the planning department. Have you or any staff members found anything inconsistent with the general plan?
No, nothing in this report. Great question. Um, it was noted in the staff report. There is nothing, none of these improvements um, were found to be inconsistent. I do want to say to Sheri's point about, you know, our general plan being, having very general policies, um, and maybe some more specific actions. I think this review can help us someday figure out when we have a total general plan update about maybe more um, more specific recommendations for things with that the citizens of La Mita should see, think, see or think about before the future um, of this community's development.
Okay, great. Uh, and my last comment, at the very back end of all the documentation for this particular item, uh, there is the revised draft of the safety element from October of twenty twenty-one. Uh, that was made by Dudek and of course, we've been kind of following along with this for the last year or so. Um, was there anything that we had to do with that particular item because that wasn't specified in the in the uh, initial report?
I just gave you excerpts from each of the elements so that you could see how the, you know, that these policies are there and that they're consistent as backup. I don't think there was anything more specific other than to um, acknowledge or, you know, show that, um, I think it was policy. I don't, policy four maybe, um, policy four with emergency response regarding um, the streets. When, and we were showing how it was consistent um, with the capital improvements program.
Okay, very good. Um, so with that being said, um, are we taking a vote on this at this point, which I believe is to adopt the resolution recommending city council? So I guess what we need to do is uh, if there's no more questions or comments from our commissioners, we would ask for a motion to adopt the uh, resolution recommending the council consider the uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement programs that are
Oh, moved.
Then, thank you.
Second.
Okay, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I think that was Commissioner Santos made the motion, Commissioner Steinbach seconded the motion.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dever.
Yes.
Commissioner Santos.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff.
Yes.
And Chair Camerata.
Yes.
That's seven zero approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, moving on, item number seven. Workshop to consider an update to the accessory dwelling unit regulations, establishment of permanent regulations for urban lot splits and two-unit developments which are part of the SB nine uh, legislation and revised development standards uh, to increase density for multiple single-family units in the A-one and R-one zones. Of course, the applicant again is the city of La Mita. Uh, this will be presented by uh, Planner Sheri Replozmann and Assistant Planner Quintero. And their recommended action for the county, uh, commission is to provide direction on the preparation of an ordinance amendment and direct staff to schedule a public hearing for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. With that said, um, I would ask uh, Commissioner, the uh, Planner Sheri Lowes, Lowesman to go ahead and make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. So we do have a lot of information available for you tonight to consider. Uh, this is a continuation of some of the discussions we've been having over the last year to two years. Uh, much of it is related to state law. There's been a lot of changes that we have to comply with. And some of it is related to policy in terms of how we want to promote development within La Mita. So we've decided to do this workshop with all three of these major topics because they overlap and they relate to one another. And while I know it can be a little bit confusing, I think if we talk about all three of them at the same time, um, hopefully it will provide some clearer direction in terms of options that are available. So Assistant Planner Lenesis Quintero has helped put together a presentation for tonight. So I'm going to let her take the lead and then I'll follow up in, towards the end of the discussion and then we'll have a bunch of questions to, to be able to ask the planning commission in order to get some direction. But our goal is to set a public hearing for your next meeting, which is in June. And we'd like it to be comprehensive to address both accessory dwelling units, the SB nine regulations, as well as the ability to promote development within the A-one and R-one zone. So to the extent that we can really, you know, talk through all of these things, that will provide us better direction to complete that ordinance. So we appreciate your, your time and your attention tonight. So Lenesis, the game is yours.
Goodie, sorry, good evening, commissioners. As Sheri said, tonight's workshop will focus on uh, residential development, ADUs, SB nine and increased density in A-one and R-one zoning districts. Next slide, please. So the city's housing element was approved by city council on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. It is currently under review by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Next slide, please. Identified in the housing element are a number of proposed policies and programs to facilitate the creation of housing and also aid the city in reaching its regional housing needs allocation number. So tonight we'll be talking about three major programs, the first being rezoning opportunities. So this would be applicable in the A-one and the R-one zoning districts. Ongoing code updates. Um, so this would be more applicable in regards to updating our current ADU ordinance to comply with state law and supporting low density through um, provisions for SB nine and as well as increased density in A-one and R-one zoning districts. So we'll start off with accessory dwelling units. Next slide, please. The city's current regulations are out of compliance with state law, which became effective January first of two thousand twenty. So the entirety of our current ADU ordinance needs to be amended. And there are some amendments which will, we will need to um, do in order to comply with state law. So this would include the number of units. Um, with the latest state law revisions, there's now accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units which are allowed on lots with existing and proposed single-family units. Um, there is a difference between ADUs and junior ADUs. Junior ADUs are um, conversions of existing space within the single-family residence. So this could include um, for example, a master bedroom or an attached garage. They are limited to five hundred square feet and they do require owner occupancy. Um, with the latest state law revision, ADUs are now also allowed in multifamily structures. This would be through conversion of existing non-happitable space such as garages, storage rooms, basements, as well as um, detached accessory dwelling units. The state law also removed owner occupancy requirements until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. They are so required for junior accessory dwelling units. And the state law also eliminated um, the required parking. There are a number of exemptions under state law, one of them being that the ADU is located within half a mile walking distance of a public transit. Next slide, please. There are some items that we can include in ordinance such as height. Um, we are proposing a detached height maximum of sixteen feet and the possibility to increase that height to twenty-seven feet so long as the ADU complies with the setbacks in the underlying zone. So this would be five foot side and twenty foot rear. Um, if they decide to do um, to comply with the state law, which is four feet for the side and four feet for the rear, they would be limited to sixteen feet high maximum. Um, there is a minimum and maximum unit size. We're proposing eight hundred and fifty square feet and one thousand square feet for more than one bedroom. Um, there is no square footage maximum for ADUs created from the conversion of existing legally um, existing space such as a garage or um, another accessory structure. We are also proposing open space um, requirements which would reflect the open space requirement in the urgency ordinance for SB nine. So that would be two hundred and twenty-five square feet as well as um, having the ADU match the design of the primary residence. Next slide, please. So I'll discuss some of um, the applications for ADUs that the city has submit, has received. Um, this is an example of an attached garage being converted into an attached ADU. There is no open space designated for the ADU and there's also no development or design standards. And the ADU is highlighted in yellow. Next slide, please. This is an example of a detached ADU, which um, to get advantage of the one thousand two hundred square foot size maximum for ADUs in state law. So in this example, the ADU is actually larger than the existing residence. The existing residence is only about eight hundred and nineteen square feet and the ADU is one thousand two hundred square feet. There is no There is no, again, there is no designated open space and there's no design and development standards. And the only reason you'll see kind of the greater rear setback for the ADU is because there's an easement. Other than that, they were proposing the four foot rear setback. And this is an example of a multifamily, a multifamily in a, an ADU in a multifamily structure. Again, there's no designated open space, no design standards, and they are eliminating all of the off-street parking spaces for the multifamily unit. So moving on to SB nine. Next slide, please. SB nine become effective this year in January 1st. On February 28th, 2022, city council adopted urgency ordinance number 832U. And on April 5th, 2022, the city extended the urgency ordinance for another 10 months and 15 days. There are two components of SB nine. There's the urban lot split, which allows for any lot in the A1 and R1 zone to be split into two lots and allows for two units on those lots. So that could either be two primary units or one primary, one ADU. And there's also the two unit development, which allows for the construction of a second primary dwelling unit, which is not an ADU or a junior ADU and allows for up to four units per parcel without an urban lot split. So these are some standards which were included in the urgency ordinance. There is now a maximum unit size of 800 square feet, a 16 foot high maximum, open space requirement, which is 225 square feet, an affordability requirement and allows for the maximum of two units on a parcels created by an urban lot split, which without, without this clause, they would be allowed four units. And this is an example of an SB nine application that the city has received. This identifies an existing primary dwelling unit, a detached ADU with an attached garage, and the applicant is now returning to convert their existing detached garage into an SB nine unit. There are different parking requirements for each of these units. The existing primary dwelling unit would be required to include parking spaces. The AD nine would, the ADU would not be required any parking so long as they're half a mile within a public transit stop, which it is. And the SB nine requirements are a little more stringent. They are required to be half a mile from a walking distance from a high quality transit stop, which would mostly be located along Western and PCH. So this just identifies kind of the three different types of units on one lot.
Right. Well, thank you very much, Lemesis, for going over the ADU and the SB nine. Before we start talking about multiple unit development in the A1 and R1 zone, I wanted to see if there was any questions from the planning commission relative to ADUs and SB nine. Because I think as you can see by the, the exhibits that we provided, both of those laws have created significant leniency in terms of what developers and property owners are able to do with their properties. And in many cases, it provides for an increased development intensity on the property and a significantly decreased amount of parking that's available onsite. So we are certainly going to see over time that more and more parking demand is going to occur in our streets. There will be more people occupying each of the, the properties. I think given the, you know, the demand for housing, the increased value that people are seeing for both rents as well as for sale product, this is not something that we see changing anytime in the near future. But are there any questions from the commission on ADUs and SB nine before we proceed?
Uh, yeah, I have a quick question, Sherry. That presentation that was, that was just presented, can we get a copy of that, please?
Absolutely. We'll send that to you.
Yeah, because it's, uh, if you can send, send a hard copy out, it would be appreciated because it summarizes a lot of what I probably believe is in all of the documents that you have sent us, the laws and so on and so forth. And that summary seems to, uh, maybe will help us understand all of the laws.
Right. It's very, very comprehensive and complicated in terms of understanding all these different laws. So I mean, I, I would suggest to the planning commission, certainly read all of the material so that you have a good understanding. But even for us, I mean, we've probably read them, you know, 15, 20, maybe a million times. There are still things that we see and it's like, oh my gosh, you know, there's a conflict or there's, you know, another overlaying requirement. So we, we've tried to be very conscientious about looking at kind of a tiered, a stepped approach between the ADUs, the SB nine, and hopefully some other alternatives for A1 and R1. But, you know, there's no perfect answers to these things. I think the state has created, you know, a very difficult process and cities unfortunately just have to do the best that we can. As Lemesis indicated, there are some standards that are prescriptive. We don't have a choice. But there are other things that we do have some ability to modify. And that's primarily related to the height of the structures, the size of the structures and some of the site development standards. So our goal is not to prohibit. We certainly want to encourage the ADUs and some of the SB nine developments because I think ultimately that's good for the community. But we are concerned that some developers, some property owners, as you've seen with some of these examples, they take it to the extreme. And so having a little bit more checks and balances, I think will be better for Lomita.
And then Sherry, if I may just add briefly, you did hit the nail kind of right on that, right on the head that, you know, SB nine does kind of answer, I mean, ask more questions than it answers. So while that presentation is, is, is rock solid as of today, I, I would just caution everyone, it is somewhat of a ever-evolving area of law. These laws are brand new. Once again, that presentation, exactly our understanding, the city attorney's, the city attorney's office's understanding, but with the caveat that for all we know, you know, HCD or court may come out with something in, in the next month or so where it's, it, you know, all of a sudden the calculus changes.
Uh, yes, Sherry, what, what? How have, how has the city of Lomita approached the parameters that they are setting, that they believe that, that are going to help control these? I mean, I, I can't come up with the right words, but I, I guess what, what is the approach that the city of Lomita is taking to try to curb the severe mandates? I don't know how else to put it without, you know, being incorrect. But how is the approach? I mean, are you, are you putting things forward that you know will protect the city of Lomita to the extent possible? Or, or, you know, help, help us try, help all of us try to understand the approach that is being taken. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your question. And, you know, we're, we're trying to be cautious as well because we recognize that the state has some very legitimate goals. But we also recommend, recognize that, you know, it's kind of, the proof is in the pudding, as they would say in England. You know, it's ultimately how you apply these ordinances and these new laws in terms of the effects on neighborhoods and individual properties. I think one of the main things that we've seen is the relationship of size to the property in terms of the elimination of trees and open space and, you know, truly qualitative space for the property. And also the height, because if you only have four foot setbacks and you're allowing for a two-story structure, you know, the privacy and the compatibility between properties is severely impacted. So those, I would say are probably the two main things that we've looked at. Lemesis, did you have anything to add with that?
No, just, um, being really consider about the size, like you mentioned. In that example that I showed about the detached ADU where the ADU is actually exceeding the size of the existing primary dwelling unit, kind of shows that the applicants are just kind of thinking short-term in a sense and not really looking to provide that open space for either one of the occupants of either the, the primary dwelling unit or the ADU.
Right. You know, and I would say that there are several things that we're still investigating because we're trying to figure out whether or not the state is correct on certain points. For example, in the ADU laws and the SB nine laws, the requirements are for a four-foot setback and a four-foot rear yard. Now, in the city of Lomita, we have a very specific standard for front yards, which is both for the primary front yard, which is facing the street. But there's also a secondary front yard when you're on a corner lot. And we do not see that as being a side yard. That is an additional front yard. However, we understand in some of the comment letters that HCD has sent out to cities that they're suggesting that a side yard that is adjacent to a street is a side yard or not at a secondary front yard. And it seems to me, and we'll follow up with, you know, the city attorney's office with Patrick on this. But it seems to me that cities should have the ability to provide definitions that are clear and concise and not inconsistent with state law. So I'm concerned that there's maybe a little bit of an overreach with the state trying to suggest we should only have four foot setbacks adjacent to a street. That's really close to put somebody's bedroom windows. And I don't think that serves the, you know, the legitimate effort to try to increase housing. It creates kind of a, what I would consider almost to be a substandard condition. But, but that's an example of areas that we're still investigating, but it's primarily the ones that we've already identified that we've already somewhat resolved in terms of our suggestions to the planning commission during this workshop. We're primarily looking at the SB nine urgency ordinance as being a template. If there are any specific changes that the planning commission would like to see that that document, that probably would then trickle down to the ADU ordinance because we want them to be as consistent as possible between the two.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Steinbach.
Thank you. So question for staff, kind of, I guess, a statement and, and question. I, I see that we're being very diligent in trying to accommodate the state's wishes. But I do hear things like what's best for the community or good for the community or, and I've yet to see in any form or anything that we're doing could be construed to the community as better for the community. That's just, that's a statement I'll put up front. What my concern is, and it's unfortunate, it's occupational hazard for me here is that once things are, are looked at for how do we make this happen? We don't look at ways to how to mitigate what's going to happen because of it. So, you know, one of the things that caught my, my ear during the presentation was the parking issue. We're not going to require parkings for ADUs. And by the way, ADU is accessory dwelling unit, not dwelling unit. And this junior designation, I actually started snickering when I was reading it because I guess somebody had to come up with a way to do it. So the parking issue of not requiring parking, if they're within a half a mile of rapid transit, that doesn't mean they're going to use rapid transit. In fact, just the exact opposite. It's just a way to say we're going to allow it to happen because everybody drives cars. Because you gotta go so far to get anywhere around here. I, I mean, it's just not going to happen. And I think for us to put our head in the sand and say, ah, this is the way to make it happen is going to create an issue because the cars are not going to work. And like the example that you showed, I, if I had a property like that, I'd probably want to do the same thing. But now you can't park in that driveway area because then you'd be shuffling cars all the time. So they're going to go on the street. I don't know about the rest of you, but all the streets surrounding, I live on an intersection and a residential intersection. There is no place to park any cars anywhere at night, period. So if, if all the large lots around me decide to do this, or even 50% of them, and we got an extra 100 cars, I don't have no idea where they're going to go. And, and so, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say, let's not do this. What I'm trying to say is the mitigating factors of what we do have to be considered. We, we have to look at, and I, and I might, it's kind of a long way to get around the question, staff. Are we looking at what it's going to do to water? Are we going to look what it's due to power? Increase traffic on our streets? I mean, we're, we're looking now at our capital expenditures and we're talking about fixing streets. Well, that's more car traffic. I mean, these things are not insignificant and I hope we're not getting them lost in the weeds while we're busy trying to satisfy the state. Because in the world I survived in, when the state wanted something done, it became, it became a do it or else. And then once we created an environment where people should do it and we tried to make it as attractive, attractive as possible, when it didn't happen, then it became mandate that once you sell your property, then now you have to do it. So I'm really getting squirmy on this thing right now and I, I'm, I have not seen, and I'm, please, I don't want to sound accusatory to staff. I'm not in any way, shape or form. But I hope that, and I hope that at some point we can have some dialogue as to how we're going to mitigate the negative effects of what we're creating here. Unfortunately, Commissioner Steinbach, it's my understanding that to meet the laws, you don't, you don't have an option. You have to, you have very few options. Or you can fight the law. Exactly, but Some have chosen to do and we have not. Yeah, they've tried that and, and I, I, I mean, if every city in the state of California would try to fight it, maybe something would happen. But the point of the matter is, and, and I'm, I'm right along with you, Bob, is that, you know, you, there unfortunately is no way to mitigate the, the requirement for not having a parking space. I agree with you 100%, but the city of Lomita's hands are tied. I disagree completely.
I disagree.
We've, we've tied our hands. We, we, all we're doing is going along with what we're being told to do. I don't see any pushback whatsoever. I, I, you know, I've been pretty quiet up until this point, but I'm really getting frustrated.
Well, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, I was just in, in saying what Bob is, I mean, I think that this whole parking thing and, and being as a personal owner of a huge lot that already has three that's on a dollar sign slap at me. I can add three additional units on a property as ADUs. And that's six. Every single household, well, not every single, but the majority of households in Lomita have on an average of three and a half cars. I don't know where that half comes from, but you've got three cars per house. If I add three additional units, that's 3, 6, 9, 12, 12 or so cars that are now going to be parking on a street, which now doesn't have enough parking spots. And so my initial question that I was going to ask is being involved in other cities, a lot of outlying cities are fighting this whole issue for different reasons. One, why are we not fighting to keep our community the way we are? And I don't want to build 27 high foot units with people with no place to park. I mean, it becomes a dollar and cents and I don't think that that's what Lomita is about. Um, yes, we need housing. Yes, we need to upgrade a lot of stuff. But at what cost? Like Bob said, where are we going in the future? What are, what are we leaving to our kids as a community? And, and I too appreciate everything that the staff does and I, I see where they are. But we're letting state officials back us into a corner that we have no recourse and we have no way out of. And we're going to have to live with those consequences. And I, I really would like to see some kind of pushback and stand up for, for our small, I mean, we're a small city. And they're already asking us to overload it with all these additional housing units. It's, when does enough become enough?
Well, those are all really good comments and you are not alone. We're hearing that from other cities up and down the state. And I would say there's several things. There is some pushback occurring and I think it's happening in several different areas. One is with lawsuits. There are a number of cities that are specifically litigating on SB nine. Lomita has not joined that lawsuit, but there are some cities that are pushing it forward. Through the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, Lomita is monitoring what's happening with SB nine as well as other housing legislation. And I know that some of our elected officials are very much involved with not only conversations with the COG, but also conversations with some of our state representatives. So there, that's really the, one of the best areas that you can have in terms of making a difference. So there, that's really the, one of the best areas that you can have in terms of making a difference. Is talking to your assembly members, talking to your senators. Because they're the ones that are ultimately voting on the state legislation. And there is a difference between how these laws impact communities like La Mida. Versus how they're impacting, you know, communities that are, you know, surrounded by light rail systems. You know, we don't have the same type of mass transit that other communities have. But in terms of parking, going specifically back to that. You know, the ADU laws have been very lax on requirements for parking for a number of years. The changes that we've seen most recently is allowing now for the mixed use, I'm sorry, not mixed use, the multifamily developments to provide for ADUs. And I think the example that Lemus has just provided, you know, I find that really shocking. You've got a four unit project. That was providing onsite parking and now all of that onsite parking is being created into an additional unit. So everyone loses onsite parking, they all have to be on the street. And at some point, there's, there's a tipping factor in terms of when people will tolerate that. And no longer want to rent into a community. Or what the state is hoping is that it will change the, change the behavior. That people will find that it's so difficult to find parking that they'll now buy an e-bike, they'll take public transit. They'll work remotely from home, you know, they'll work alternative hours, you know, but it's a whole lifestyle change. And granted, that will ultimately happen, but it's really painful to get there. And for communities like La Mida that have never had that culture. I think it's going to be difficult for many of the neighborhoods to get through that. But that is what the state is expecting us to happen. They're expecting us to change our lifestyles. Right? So it's just a very blunt statement on their behalf. They're always telling us through their correspondence and through their requirements that we should be reducing parking standards. Not only for residential, but also for commercial. Because they want to retrain people to use public transit and to otherwise. You know, use their feet or bicycles or other modes to be able to get back and forth to places. You know, it's going to be difficult to get there. That's all I can say. But in terms of what staff is doing, you know, we are trying to find ways. To incentivize developers to meet better standards. And you've heard me say that constantly over the last year or so. That we can look at the state requirements, we can make sure that we're in compliance with. The minimum standards and maybe a few other things. But anything beyond that. I think the developers and property owners should be stepping up to the plate. And providing for a higher level of development and something that's more consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. So that leads us into our discussion on the A1 and R1. So I'm hoping is Linda is back because I know she stepped away for a moment. And if so, yep, she's back. So Linda, if we can go to the next slide, please. So one of the goals that we've talked about in the housing element is supporting low density. When we were going through the housing element. We weren't sure that SV nine was going to get approved. But it was kind of like, you know, seeing the tide pull out, knowing that that tidal wave might be coming in. Well, it did. So we created this program to basically say. We want to kind of teeter totter between what SV nine requires. But also ways that we can promote development in our low density neighborhoods. Next slide, please. And what we specifically talked about was the density within our A1 and R1. You know, La Mida is like many other cities, we have a 1 to 5,000 square foot ratio, meaning we have one dwelling unit for every 5,000 square feet of property. That's really standard for a single family zone. But we're now competing against ADUs and SV nine. And so if there's more incentive for that, for developers to use SV nine, which frankly is not always a good form for housing. We will find that that's being used and we don't have a lot of control over it. But by going to something that allows for one dwelling unit for every 4,000 square feet, I'm hoping that we can develop design standards. At a more cooperative relationship with our developers and property owners. That ultimately, you know, everything's rising to a higher level. That's my goal. That's my hope. Next slide. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Can you go back to the last slide just for a second? I just wanted to clarify one thing. So if we were to go to a 1 to 4,000 ratio. Our general plan and our zoning ordinance need to be consistent. So the chart that you see here is an excerpt from our general plan. Right now in the A1 and the R1 and various R1 related districts. We establish what the size of the development standards are for the residential use. And so if we were to go to 1 to 4,000, we would have to increase the density up to 10.89 dwelling units per acre. And then make the corresponding changes to median density as well, so that they're consistent. But I want to remind the planning commission that with SV nine. You can actually end up with even greater density than the 10.89 dwelling units per acre. And it doesn't matter what your general plan says because the state has overruled your general plan. Right? So but if we adopt standards that we're trying to implement locally, we need to make sure that our general plan is in fact consistent. Okay, next slide. So we've spent a lot of time looking at SV nine versus, you know, some new ordinance and what that might do. And one of the things we thought about first was, you know, we do have a standard for RVD 5,000 and that can be applied today. And we've talked to a number of developers about using the RVD standard and they're interested in doing that. And I'll show you some examples of what's been done in the city previously. But what we're hearing now is that there's also a concern because SV nine might actually give them more lots. And they're trying to figure out what recipe is going to work best for both them and the market conditions. So using this slide as an example, if we're looking at a 4,000 square foot average. If someone, when someone were to use SV nine. One of the things that we realized is that a change to our ordinance does not. Protect us from a further SV nine urban lot split. What that means is that SV nine says that if you have an existing legally subdivided property and it has not been subdivided pursuant to SV nine. That that property owner is still eligible to subdivide it again. So whether it's 5,000, 4,000, whatever it might be, they can subdivide again. But there is one way that we might be able to protect ourselves from this. And one is to encourage the development that is eligible for 4,000 square foot lots. To actually provide for a planned residential development. That provides the average of 1 to 4,000. A planned development is, and I'll show you some examples, but they're similar to almost like a condominium development. But they allow for fee simple lots and they allow for shared ownership of common lots. But it does require that a homeowners association is in place. That there's, you know, CCNRs, that there's the standard restrictions in order to regulate. The use of the property. And I wanted to provide a definition of a planned unit development, which is a planned residential development in our case. Because this would be the definition that I think would be good for La Mida to incorporate. But it's a development that's established to provide an alternative to standard residential development. Wherein the existing general plan densities are preserved, but there's flexibility in providing. By providing and allowing for clustering of units and combining of open space, recreation areas, roadways and common ownership. So if you think about it, it's more like a courtyard or cottage style of development where there's more shared relationship between the properties. But it also means that there's some shared governance. And that becomes important when it comes to SV nine. Next slide. So homeowner associations are treated differently than cities are. Cities have to comply with the state laws. We really don't have much. Leniency in terms of saying we're not going to do it. But homeowners associations, they're not. They're not specifically mentioned in SV nine. And so therefore they can't directly violate SV nine. So SV nine is something that homeowner associations can regulate through their own powers to veto the SV nine developments. And their CCNRs can prohibit any further subdivision or development of two unit housing. And so what we're recommending is that we develop objective design standards. Which will require the inclusion of an ADU in the house design. And recognize that the HOAs will not allow for subdivision. And the reason that this is an important distinction is that. The rules for ADUs, the state laws. The HOAs are specifically required to comply. And so unless we provide some upfront design requirements where the ADUs are already inherently interwoven within the design. We may find that homeowner associations in the future will find garage conversions and other things happening within the units that they can't control. And so we'll explain that in terms of some of the design options that we would recommend. I will state though that even if we do incorporate the ADU within the design. There's still the chance that a homeowner may still try to do a JADU. But as Lemus has explained, you know, that's something that's within the existing unit. It has to be owner occupied and it cannot be more than 500 square feet. So it's probably a little bit less likely that we'll get JADUs in any of our homeowner associations. But it's still something that, you know, we just have to be mindful of. Okay, next slide. So this just kind of explains the differences between a planned residential development and what we would see as a condominium association. The representation that you see on the left hand side is actually in the city of La Mida. This is on 248th Street. And it was a development by the Skiafa Development Company. And I think Luigi is probably still on, so he can even answer questions about this. But it is a PUD from the perspective that each house is sitting on its own property and then there's a common lot. That provides for the access circulation and then in the back of the property, there's some open space in the fire department turnaround. But this provides a very good level of control. Because the HOA is able to regulate the maintenance, the design, the. How people are able to utilize both the common area and certain portions of their own private properties. And there's also insurance being provided for both the individual as well as the common lots. On the right hand side, this is more what you'd see in a condominium plan. Where the property is under a single ownership and then individuals are able to buy the air rights to the units. This can also work. So it's something that we can consider as we go forward with the ordinance, but under both of these cases, you have a homeowners association with CCNRs. So they can help regulate for the SV nine two lot subdivisions. Next slide. We also wanted to give you an example of subdivisions that have occurred in La Mida utilizing the 5,000 square foot lot requirements. And the one that you see in the middle, you know, is the most conservative. That's where the city used to require public streets to be extended. So we'd actually have a public cul-de-sac. And then the subdivision taking place. I don't really see anybody proposing this anymore. It's too expensive. And given SV nine, why go through and put a new street in when you can simply subdivide and get more, more units anyway? The other two representations on the right and left hand side. Show the kind of a flag lot configuration. Kind of creative, but yeah, they still work. This is something we could still provide for, but we would still want to make sure that there's a homeowners association and CCNRs. Because we want to regulate the ability for both maintenance as well as future subdivision and units coming in. Next slide. So here is an example of what SV nine could do. So this is a property that's in La Mida. Its location will not be disclosed unless somebody asks me. But it's not an unusual location. You know, it's an oversized piece of property with one house on it. So what happens with SV nine? So first off, if somebody wanted to develop this property, they would be smart first coming to the city and subdividing it under our existing ordinance. So creating 5,000 minimum square foot lots, you'd have three lots that would be created. Then you could come in and use SV nine and subdivide those three lots. Which means that you would end up having six properties. So under the first, when you have the, the three parcels. SV nine says that with an existing unsubdivided SV nine property. That you're eligible for two primary units plus two ADUs or JADUs. So you get four units per property. So you get 12. If you subdivide. There are some restrictions on the way that you can do the properties. However, you're still able to subdivide and have two dwelling units on each parcel. So you still end up with 12 units. So we go from a property that had one property or one unit to one that theoretically could have 12. Now, the only issue with SV nine is because of the way that you create the subdivisions. It may not be overly efficient. It may not look very good. It may not be as marketable. But it still provides a huge number of units. Okay, next slide. Here is another example. Oops, let's go back one. So this is actually a property that Skiafa Development currently has. In their control and they're looking to develop it. If we were to use the existing ordinance and just as the A1 zone, they could subdivide it into three parcels. In reality, what they probably would do, which would be smarter. Is to come back with a zone change and ask the planning commission and city council to apply the RVD 5,000. Which would give them seven units. So if we just simply divide the 39,529 by 5,000. That's seven units because we don't round up for them to get the additional eighth unit. But the existing A1 is pretty restrictive in terms of what they could do. But still having three parcels and having four units per parcel, they theoretically could still get 12 units, which is a lot. With SV nine, if they were to subdivide. Again, they have the potential for having 12 units. Now Luigi Skiafa is participating in the workshop, so he might, you know, provide some comments if there's questions to him. But one of the things we've talked to him is, is really what is appropriate in terms of infill development. And I think he recognizes that there's concern with the SV nine in terms of what could happen with future. You know, subdivisions and additional units and ADUs being added. So he's trying to create a land form, a housing development that. Ultimately fits into the neighborhood, that's more consistent and compatible. So what he's been talking to us about is if there is support for having the 1 to 4,000 range. He would actually like to propose a project that has eight primary units. So it's really not much more than what the 1 to 5,000 provides for. However, we have talked to him about trying to be protective about ADUs. And incorporating an ADU design within the primary house design. Because that way somebody can't come forward later and just try to convert the garage, which is kind of the low hanging fruit. They may still try for a JADU, but I think that's a little bit less, less likely. So next slide, please. And here's the sample of what the Skiafa Development has provided to us. And it's a very rough sketch, but it's meant to illustrate that they're willing to work with us in terms of an ADU concept being incorporated within the primary house design. So you'd still have the, the main area of the primary residence on the ground floor. But it's towards the back of the house, so it has more access to the rear yard. And then the bedrooms would be upstairs and then the ADU would be up towards the front with its own separate entrance. And all of its little kitchenette area and self-contained washing and all of that. Next slide. But here's an example of what other developers are doing. So this is not a new concept. It's often referred to as multi-generational housing. But it is really just an attached EDU into the house. And I think you're going to find this to be more common as we go forward because cities will start figuring out that this is kind of a way to protect for a better design. But a lot of times the attached ADUs are a little bit larger. They actually have a separate living area and a separate bedroom. And depending on the configuration of the property. You know, you could either have a single story or most likely a multi-story in our case. Some cities are even considering going to three stories just because it provides a little bit more square footage of flexibility on how you can design for the ADU. Next slide. But there are plenty of opportunities to be able to see property owners taking advantage of SV nine and ADUs. This is just one example. So this is an area between Pennsylvania and Cypress. And this is an excerpt from the LA County Assessors data. And you can see just based on the size of these properties and the, the number of units or the number of buildings that they have on the properties that. There's a lot of underutilized property. But these are also really difficult properties to develop by themselves. These particular properties are about 387 and a half feet long. And they range between 45 to 60 feet in width. So if you were just developing on its own, it's like a bowling alley, you know, with units along the side and it's difficult to do turnaround or anything else. What I'm hoping or what staff is hoping will happen is that we will create some development standards that. Have enough incentives that developers are able to assemble some of these properties together. Because again, what you see with the cul-de-sac design, I don't think we'll see any more of that because of the cost. But if developers see that there's enough value by being able to assemble properties because one, they can get the density. But also it just creates more flexibility and a nicer design. We ultimately may get better infill development. But absent that, you will still have individuals with SV nine. Trying to cram in as many units as they can. And it may not provide parking or any of the other amenities that the community feels that are important. But the amendments that could be done to the A1 and R1 zone through planned residential developments. Would specifically be designed to incorporate open space, tree preservation, parking. Setbacks and height that ultimately would be consistent with the surrounding area. So next slide. And this is just an example of an assembled property in another community where they were able to do the detached single family. This particular one shows the parking in front of the garages. In some cases, parking can be provided in designated areas. I think the larger the development, the more that you may need to have guest parking. If it's just a small development with, you know, maybe three or four units. It may not be as critical. But as we've. But as we've realized with other SB nine and ADU projects. You know, if property owners are opting not to provide any onsite parking. It will be more and more important for these other forms of development to be self-sufficient and still have enough parking that they don't rely upon the street. So as long as we can provide enough incentives that the parking is not burdensome and doesn't prohibit the project from being successful, it may be a good win-win concept. Okay, next slide. So we have a number of different questions to hopefully guide us through some of this discussion. And I will let Lemesis talk through the ADU and the SB nine questions first, and then we'll go on to the A one and R one. But I guess maybe before doing that, are there any questions on what I was just discussing with A one, R one?
I will entertain any questions from the commission, any questions from commissioner vice chair graph?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Dever?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Santos?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Commissioner Steinbach? Commissioner Stevens?
No.
And Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Okay. We can proceed.
Hey, Mr. Chair and other commissioners, I will note too that we have a couple of people who are on the Zoom call. I do see that both Luigi and Lorenzo Skia have joined us. And I see it's Ricky and I think that may be Ricky de la Rosa, who's one of the architects who's been involved with some of the projects here in the South Bay. So I would like after we have some of the questions and answers between the planning commission and staff. Is to make sure that we are allowing them to join in with the discussion. And with that, Lenesis, I'll turn it back to you.
So some policies to consider regarding ADUs are minimum junior ADU size, so either one hundred and fifty square feet or two hundred and twenty square feet. Establishing a maximum height of sixteen feet. And also establishing open space requirements. And regarding SB nine, should we keep the eight hundred square foot maximum that was identified in the urgency ordinance as well as the affordability requirement?
And there certainly could be more questions than that, but those are ones that we specifically identify just to get some direction from the commission. In terms of the size of the J eighty use. We indicated that five hundred square feet is the maximum. Many cities are using two hundred and twenty square feet as the minimum. However, we do see that there is kind of micro efficiency units that are becoming popular. And you know, we don't necessarily see a problem with going down to a smaller size. The other benefit of having a smaller size is that we have seen a couple of projects coming through recently where. The master bedrooms are being included with kind of a coffee bar. But it's almost like a neat, like a little kitchenette area. And to the extent that they provide a kitchenette. We would just as soon like to qualify them as a J eighty. So that way, if a property owner in the future actually carves them out as a separate unit. We've already incorporated it as kind of part of the design and we've taken credit for it in terms of our annual progress report that we submit to the state. It also puts certain restrictions on the ability to lease the property because it has to be owner occupied if they do use it as a separate unit. So it allows us to track it in case there's any changes in the future. So if there's any comments or questions on that from the commission?
Let me run through everybody. Vice Chair Graff, any comments, questions?
Not now.
Hey, Commissioner Dever, any questions?
Not now.
Commissioner Santos?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Oh.
Commissioner Stevens? Brenda, you there? Commissioner Stevens, any questions, comments?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you. Then we'll, we'll take that as basically not having any opposition to using the smaller size, but we'll provide more information. You'll see that in the draft ordinance as we bring it forward. And in terms of the maximum height, we are recommending the sixteen feet, which is one story. There are some cities that are allowing for the second story primarily so that units can be above a garage. But again, we're trying to be more protective. So we're saying sixteen feet unless they're otherwise meeting the greater setbacks of the underlying zone. So unless I hear there's any opposition or questions, we will assume that that would be direction for inclusion in the organs.
That's a good idea. I like that.
Okay.
Sherry, I'm sorry. It's Laura. I had a question on that.
Sure.
Was the maximum height of the detached ADU for? In the setback or? Only or everywhere on the lot?
No, it would basically into sixteen foot height limitation if they're meeting the minimum setbacks established by the ADU laws. If they're meeting the greater setbacks, then they're eligible for a twenty seven foot set or height, which means that they could go two stories.
Thank you so much for clarifying that because I think that benefits the. Keeping lot coverage at. And more open space possible.
And, and I would agree. And I think if we have minimum size requirements, as Lenesis indicated, it's eight hundred and fifty square feet would be the maximum if it's an efficiency unit. Or one bedroom. And if it's greater than one bedroom, it's one thousand square feet. So we're, we're again trying to be a little bit more conservative on the size of the unit so that they don't just gobble up all of the, the space on the property. And sometimes allowing for that two-story element, it could be a two-story ADU. Or it can simply be a, a second story that incorporates the entire ADU. So unless we hear any opposition to that, we're going to assume that that would be appropriate for inclusion in the organs.
I think. I. I think you're assuming a lot. If, if somebody doesn't. Oppose the size doesn't mean we don't oppose or that person doesn't oppose the concept.
Well, that's, that's correct, Commissioner. I mean, that's why we're bringing it to you. We're, we will be having a public hearing the next time we bring it back. And so there's certainly opportunity to modify the ordinance, you know, provide whatever you think would be appropriate as a commission. But we're just trying to make sure that the draft that we bring you is as, as close as possible to something that the commission might want to approve.
And I, I guess I'm asking the other commissioners that are, are we? Are we on board with? Converting a bedroom into a, a, a unit? It's just a bedroom. Or, or any space that we carve out inside of a house. That we're creating this thing now that we're going to be able to. Take credit for. And in as a unit, I mean, is this the direction we want to go? This is the first I've really. Not the first. I've heard of the concept, but. This is kind of dangerous.
I agree, Bob. And I guess, I guess another question is, is what if we all vote no?
Well, that's easy.
What? No. What happens if we all vote no?
You could vote no.
And, and it doesn't, it doesn't get sent to the city council. Do they act without the planning commission? I mean, you know, I mean, that's the possible, possibility of revolt, I guess you would say.
Well, and I don't, I don't want to be in a, in a revolt situation here. Please, please don't misunderstand my. My thoughts here.
I, I don't, I don't, Bob. And I, I'm just. I'm just as concerned as you are about the fact of. Unfortunately, it's a government overreach and how do you deal with it?
Well, when you're, when you're a, a public official, as we are. And, and we're, and we're an elected official and you. You put something out there and you say, this is what the city is going to do. You own that. And you live with that. You live with that forever. Every decision you make, every vote you make is yours forever. It never goes away. And so. I think I. I kind of think we're treating it, the public as. A little naive right now when we say. And as far as saying owner occup, I'm sorry.
Mistress.
It doesn't matter what we want to call it. It doesn't matter what the regulations are. I'm, I'm from, and you know, I, I've written so many laws, it's, I can't even count them. And my argument to staff was always if we can't enforce this. Then why are we doing this? And a lot of the things that we're putting out there right now, we are not going to be able to enforce. We don't have the staff to do it or the wherewithal or, quite frankly, the appetite for it. And I'm. I'm not saying we don't do this. I'm saying some of it is, and I really appreciate staff. And trying to get incredibly creative to come up with this, please, I, I admire that, but. I feel like all we're trying to do right now is satisfy the state law. And not look at the consequences or not look at the ancillary issues that are going to have a greater effect down the road. And, and I'm, I hate, I'm not trying to be the gloom and doom, but I hate being in a position. Where I've seen this before and I know this is what's going to happen. I'm not saying the rest of you have not. I'm just saying. I know what I know, and this is really kind of spooky.
So Commissioner Steinbach, let me address some of those, those comments. So first off, if we don't adopt our own ordinance, then we have to comply with the state ordinance. What that means is that the size requirements for ADUs is twelve hundred square feet. So it's even bigger than what we're proposing. It means that we don't have a sixteen foot height limit. So someone can propose a two-story ADU four foot from their property line.
I understand that, but if we roll over right now and just the state says this is what we do and we just roll over and. And lay on our backs and just do whatever they want. Then, then quite frankly, there's nothing to stop them from doing it again. And that's not what I'm talking, we're not talking about theirs being more restrictive, ours being more restrictive. Here's one that we haven't talked about. And of course, I understand why we're not talking about it. But so we change all of these requirements, everything that's proposed in totality. And then you look at your neighborhood. And you look at the people that have not chosen to. Take advantage of these opportunities, let's call them. To. Create a different environment on their lot. What about the ones that don't choose to do that, but they want those side yards and they want to reduce front yards and. It changes a prevailing setback and all the other little things that are in our zoning code. All the things that we abide by. And now all of a sudden, they want to do that. Are you going to tell them no? And if you are, be prepared for the city attorney's bill to go up. Because. We're creating things here on garages and separation from property lines and heights. And they all work good for the scenario that we're talking about. But what about the scenario where I don't want to add an ADU or a J A D U? And I just want to increase and go bigger. And I want to cover more of my lot and I want, or whatever the situation is, I believe me, I could drive around and find one. That would just curl your hair and, and. We're not talking about that. We're, I don't think we're doing anything to mitigate those issues. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I'm not shade, not saying we shouldn't create ADUs. I'm not saying any of that. What I'm seeing is what are we going to do about the fallout? And why are we not anticipating that? And what's going to happen? We're all professionals. We're all in one form or another in this industry and we have a lot of shared knowledge. We're not talking about.
Well, those are some of the things that the planning commission could ultimately talk about in terms of. How you do street improvements, how you otherwise provide for the infrastructure within your community. But to some extent, you are a. You know, you're, you're kind of a victim of the state's laws because whether, whether we like it or not, we have to comply with the laws. If we refuse to issue the ordinances. I'm sorry, if we refuse to issue the permits associated with ADUs, J eighty use and SB nine. We would be subject to a legal challenge.
That's extortion.
Well, and SB nine and ADUs, they would go and complain to H C D. H C D is now ramped up with the amount of staff they have to do compliance. And maybe even Patrick can talk about this more in terms of. Not only the threats, but what they are doing now in terms of fines and other types of penalties to cities that are not complying. Like even with the ADU ordinance, if we, we don't do anything, we have to comply with the state. But if we do adopt an ordinance, we have to submit that to H C D within sixty days of adoption. So that they can review it and tell us whether we've gone, you know, gone too far astray. So I mean, there's so many different checks and balances they have that it makes it difficult for us to have much control over our future. But as I indicated before, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking at these laws. And trying to carve out those areas that we feel we still have jurisdiction over. It is not perfect and I fully understand the frustration with what happens in terms of. The, the negative impacts into our community. But to some extent, you know, you already have an overflow situation. So to, if you can at least stop some of it from creating as much damage, I think that's a good thing.
If all of us said, and I'm going to talk about us, I'm talking about all the jurisdictions, the state said no. The state, this, they have legislative authority. That's all they have. There's no way they could do the functions that the individual jurisdictions do. They don't have the staff. They don't have the desire. They're just playing heavy handed right now and, and. I get it. I understand why they're doing it. I've seen it done so many times. But we're, we are not. I think we're taking a somewhat. Submissive role in this thing to the state and we're just not pushing. And when, when you put that program, when, when all this was put together and it went to the state the first time. I thought, I thought it was a good plan. I thought it was great. It was the amount, the right amount of oomph that I think we needed and for them to tell us no. I was quite frankly extremely insulted. As, as I think you probably weren't too. And for them to come back and then make us push to the point where now we're looking at things that I don't look at as creative. I look at them as. Hail Marys. I'm, I'm not disappointed in you. I'm disappointed in, in our efforts in that. Whether it's council or what it is, and, and I'm, I'm not going with it. I'm having a problem.
Yeah, Bob, and it's interesting how they're forcing this stuff down every, the city's throats. When they're saying we need all this housing and the population of California is actually diminishing.
And let me jump in here because we're going around and around. So I've been listening to everybody for the last forty five minutes, almost an hour. I have a couple of quick comments. So in my industry, this is a hot button topic. And it's been on the table and it's been in discussions and it's been at conferences for the last two years. Basically, as everyone knows, the state has figured out a way to try and. Resolve the housing shortage. And so they're shoving this down everyone's throat. Everybody knows it on this commission. My colleagues know it in the industry I'm in. And as Commissioner Steinbeck has pointed out, and I know there has been. Several cities that have enjoined, especially here in the South Bay. To file a lawsuit against the state. And I think that. Hearing everything. The council ought to explore the idea of enjoining the city in that lawsuit.
Yeah, that's my question, Mr. Commissioner. Interesting why? One, do a two-pronged approach, maybe we should. Pass a motion recommending to the city council that we, we need to join. With the existing other cities in their fight against SB nine. Make that we can't, we can't do it. The city council has to do that. And then to continue on with the efforts that staff has made and Sherry's bringing up to make, to make our, our, our. Proposed ordinance pretty restricted, the height restrictions are good, you know, you have the twenty seven, they're going to throw up two, you know, two-story buildings all in the front yard, that kind of stuff. So my, my thought is that we should. Maybe, maybe make a resolution to recommend to the city council that we need to join the existing lawsuit with the other cities fighting SB nine. I think I'd like to make that motion.
As well, before we get to that motion, I do want to ask Patrick very quickly his thought on that type of emotion coming from tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say that that type of dual pronged approach seems entirely within the purview of the planning commission. I get the frustration echoed by, by members here. But once again, I would reiterate with what Sherry did say that. That, that while, you know, it may seem that, hey, passing an ordinance or kind of doing our, our own standards is. Is, is capitulating or kind of, you know, you know, going along with, with what, what could be pursued as an oversight. I mean, and an overstep, excuse me. It's really not. It's, it's really protecting the city because as what Sherry said, protecting the city to the extent feasible. Because as what Sherry did say is that, you know, whether that, you know, what I'm not necessarily concerned about is a, is a giant lawsuit from H C D. Because that's going to generate a ton of coverage and they don't want to, you know, necessarily be seen as, as being heavy handed. Rather, what I'm concerned about is, is a property owner coming in and saying, hey, you guys don't have an ordinance. I get what the, what, what the, the minimum requirements in, in state law. And, and once again, I, you know, I'm not going to. Predict anything with, with great certainty, but, but to me, that's a very colorable argument to a judge that, that he or she is going to say. Hey, listen, city, you could have had your own. You didn't understand you're fighting it, but until then you, this is the law of the land and therefore you have to do it. So. So that dual pronged approach is entirely accurate and, and astute.
Okay. Patrick, Patrick, I've got a question. If we, if we. If we, if we put ordinances into place, like, uh, that is, is being proposed. And, and again, I think staff is doing the best that, that they can do with, with, under the circumstances. And we appreciate that because we have to look to them for us to make decisions. And as conservative as they, they have, they are being as conservative. In support of the city as they believe that they can. But now, we pass these ordinances and we go by these ordinances, what if a developer or an individual said. Uh, I know what the state says and you're not allowing me to do that. Can they sue the city to be able to do, to still use the, the state allowable requirements?
It, it, I mean, so of course courts are, are open to anyone, i- it's my kind of professional legal opinion. The city is in a much better legal position to say, here is our ordinance, we think it complies with SB9. And have that fight versus not having any ordinance whatsoever. So to answer your question bluntly, yes, I guess someone could sue. However, SB9 does allow for a, a local regulation. Now, of course, the, where the, the bounds of that local regulation comes down. That is going to kind of be, you know, where the rubber hits the road and, and where there could be lawsuits. Um, but, but I, you know, so, so to say that no one would sue, I can't say that. I don't think they would be successful if they sued and said, you, you have no ability to do this, you have to give me exactly what the state says. I think we're on safe grounds to say, no, we do not. This is, you know, SB9 did allow some level of, of, of objective standards, local regulation, that's what these are. Now that being said, uh, you know, whether it be in this ordinance or, or some other ordinance throughout the state. I guess a court could find that actually, no, you know, that's, that's not really an objective standard, you, you did go kind of a, a step or two too far.
Okay, well, thank you, I, I mean, I, I appreciate that. And, and like I said, I appreciate what staff is doing to try to put this together. But it sounds to me that if you are making an effort to comply, even though you have. Restrictions beyond, or, no, not beyond, you have. Your restrict, you have restrictions that are. By the letter not compliant, you're still, you're still doing your best to. To work, work with this, this situation.
Yeah, Commissioner Graff, maybe I can help you kind of formulate that statement. Because what the state indicates is there's certain, yeah, certain minimum standards that we have to do, there's no question. But then there are other things that the state gives us the flexibility to create local objective design guidelines. And requirements that fit the specific needs of our community. And so in this case for Lamita, you know, we're suggesting that we adopt an 800 square foot minimum for SB9. That we require affordability, because the, you know, when SB9 was first being touted by the state, it was, you know, we need affordable housing. So we're saying, okay, then let's make it affordable, right? So we're incorporating those standards in addition to design standards that are addressing open space. The preservation of trees, because if people are just sprawling with development on their property, they're going to take out all the trees and that's not healthy. Um, and Lamita is known for having a tree coverage, you know, we've got birds, we've got lots of things happening in Lamita. Because we have a relationship with not only the built environment, but the natural environment. So those are things that many, many cities have already incorporated within their SB9 ordinances. And the same thing is true with ADU ordinances. So I don't think we're on brand new ground by incorporating many of these same types of features. And I think Patrick's right, you know, there, there could always be somebody who challenges us because they don't like to have to adhere to a stricter standard. But as long as there's safety in numbers and other cities have done it, and we're all basically trying to be consistent with the state, I think we're in a good standing. I do think however, that we do need to address the A1 and R1 multiple unit development. Because if we just rely on the ADUs and SB9, we're still not going to get some of the developments that make a lot of sense. So having some localized control over planned residential development and/or multiple unit rental development. Um, I think will help bridge some of the. The insufficient design standards inherent with SB9 with hopefully something that we can control more locally. Um, so I think we should have any more questions that we have from the commission and then maybe open it up to the, the public.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Bob.
This is for you or, or our attorney. I know that city council goes into closed session for sometimes when it has to deal with potential litigation or. Employee issues and things like that, um, is that an option at some point for. The planning commission and/or in lieu of it being no, is it possible to be in closed session? With the city council so that we can get some direction to us? Because I think I'm sensing a feeling of. We sent, we sent something to council from the planning commission and they've said, okay, go back and create this thing. But I'm not sure what their feelings are, and I, I know we can't discuss an agendized item in the closed session. But we can certainly talk about our options or what the flavor is for. For their wanting us to move forward. And, and I, and let me just sidestep a little bit, I agree, we should go forward on this thing because we do have to have a plan, but. I'm, I don't know, I'm not sure how we're going to get to this point with us just being in the blind right now.
Well, I think Bob, the answer was a two-pronged approach.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Santos.
For you or Sherry. If the policy, under the policy consideration, the ADUs. The size of 150 square foot or 220 square foot as a minimum. Can we eliminate the 150 square foot? So, so that we don't have, like Bob said, everybody having a spare bedroom, converting it.
Mr. Santos, that, that is an option. Um, frankly, I think we were seeing it a little bit differently, that it's actually a little bit more conservative. Because we have residents who are taking their master bedrooms and adding these coffee bars. And because you can be owner occupied, you know, if you decide you want to do that. Um, if we call it a JADU, it just simply means they can't carve out any other area like their garage to create a JADU. So, but you can certainly use the 220 if you think that's more appropriate. We haven't really been seeing that many junior accessory dwelling units, most of the requests have been for ADUs.
Mr. Chair, question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Chair, I, I did just want to, I, I didn't want Commissioner Steinbeck to think I ignored him with his two questions. I, the answer is what will be very brief. As it pertains to a closed session for planning commission, no, that, that is not permitted. As it pertains to a, what I take to be kind of a joint closed session. Um, I've personally never seen it. Um, however, you know, the city council kind of as the, as the ultimate decision maker. Retains that ability to bring, you know, sometimes we have consultants or, or outside counsel or other city staff. In, in, in the closed session, um, so I see nothing in the Brown Act that would prohibit. Them from bringing in a planning commissioner, albeit I've never seen it be done. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Commissioner Stevens, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick one, and it's the test staff, since the SB9 passed. And it's going through a lot of changes, I don't think it's ever going to be written in stone that that's what it is. Because they can change it whenever they want. How many Lamita residents. Um, have applied for permits to do any kind of lot splitting or ADUs or. JDUs, um, been submitted?
Well, the ADUs and JDUs is a separate question because that's been ongoing for years. But Lemus has, perhaps you can answer on the SB9. Only one application for SB9 has been formally submitted, and that was the example that was included in the PowerPoint. But we have received a lot of inquiries. Right, and again, SB9 has only been permitted since January 1. So I think a lot of property owners and developers are still trying to figure out what it means.
It changes daily.
Yeah, but you know, I, I would expect by summertime or later this year, we'll probably see more inquiries. Because as Lemus has indicated, there's a lot of people calling and asking about it. And frankly, with the SB9, one of the things that's really put, um, I guess some cold water in the discussion. Is the requirement for the unit to be affordable. Now, to some extent, an 800 square foot unit almost by default is going to be affordable. But we have included a affordability requirement that stands for 55 years, I'm sorry, for 30 years. For an SB9 unit, so that means it runs typically beyond the ownership of the, either the developer or the current property owner.
Thank you.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have a question, if we adopt these ordinances and we submit them and whatever. Is there a guarantee that they can review these things and say, no, we consider you undermining what we wanted to have done? And just as they're doing away with the ordinances we have now, they can do away with these also?
Mr. Dever, that, that's a good question, because what we've seen with the ADU and JADU ordinances is that they are required to be submitted to HCD. Within 60 days of being approved by the city council. In some cases, the HCD staff has deemed the ordinances to be out of compliance. And so they have not, um, they've not considered them to be an adopted ordinance that can be used. Some of those things may apply to misinterpretations by the cities. But in other cases, it's, it's interpretations by HCD of what they believe is appropriate. So it, it's a little bit of a juggling act. We have been reviewing some of the most recent ADU ordinances that have been approved. And so we're trying to make sure we understand where the line, the landmines are, so we don't step on them. Um, but we've also seen what has been accepted, and that's what we're trying to incorporate within your ordinances.
And then, and then just to follow up on that, and then there is no, there's, there's not a similar formal requirement for the SB9 ordinance. Um, however, and once again, I, I don't mean to create any more confusion, and Sherry, you can correct me here if I'm wrong. Upon the next housing element, I know we're still doing on this one, these would be things that, that HCD would likely look to, to say, hey. How can you get potentially more units and/or more density? And so while it's not a formal stamp of approval, they could eventually get to these ordinances, um, that, that, not get to them, but, but offer their opinion. Or, or what they think is right that way as well.
Well, and you're absolutely right, Patrick, because that's what they've done already with our existing ordinances. They've looked at the city's current requirements for community care facilities, for conditional use permits, for multifamily, for, um. Mixed use ordinances and whether or not residential should be 100% allowed. I mean, so they, they've definitely looked at the, the more fine tuning that we have within our current ordinances. And they've made suggestions and/or requirements, so yeah, everything's on the table ultimately.
Thank you.
Will there be any. Possibility of change to. To SB9 or the ADUs or whatever, if, if. It's, it's proven, uh, or it's. The Rena, uh, numbers are incorrect, will that make any change to those? Because those Rena numbers are in huge question right now.
Yeah, Commissioner Graff, um, I agree with you, I think there's a lot of skeptical review of the Rena numbers and what happened through the housing element updates. Um, there is some legislation that is being considered, but nothing that would really pertain to SB9 and the Rena numbers that I've heard of. So I think we would probably continue with the current housing element that we've adopted and/or that we will be revising. Um, and then the next round, which will be in about eight years, that's when the new standards would apply, the new Rena.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there's no further questions on the ADUs and SB9, just briefly on the A1 and R1 multiple unit development. One of the, one of the areas obviously is whether or not the 4,000 square foot per unit. Would be enough to incentivize developers not to use SB9. Um, second would be guest parking requirements. You know, because typically in single family, we don't usually require guest parking. But it does seem to us that if you have over four units, there should be some onsite guest parking. Um, and again, that's just because we don't think there'll be much parking left on the streets. Um, the third question was really dealing with the attached ADUs. And we've initially suggested that if the unit is over 2,500 square feet, should we require an attached ADU? I mean, I think it's an open question whether you should require an attached ADU for any new single family house. Just because of the threat of, you know, some future property owner wanting to convert the garage. Um, having the ADU already embedded, at least stops them from being so incentivized about converting their garage. Uh, and then secondly, the objective design standards, and those are primarily the ones that we have within the urgency ordinance. I think the only additional one might be for the A1 and R1, whether or not you want to consider. If there might be an opportunity for a third story, just so that we can make sure that we're. Trying to build up rather than flatten out and take over all of the open space. Um, and then another one that we've talked about, and it's, it's kind of an interesting one, is what do you do about garages? Because there's this natural tendency when you have the built form and you've already made the investment in all of the walls and the electrical. Um, to be able to convert that to a habitable area is not very difficult. But if you have something that's more like a carport or an open garage, maybe only has two walls. Um, it's a lot more investment to try to convert it, so you may be able to preserve more of the parking. And not have people using it for storage or something else. So those are just some of the questions that we thought might be relevant for the planning commission, if you have any, any thoughts.
Okay, well, uh, let me ask you this question, uh, well, first of all, let me ask if anybody has any questions on what Sherry just mentioned. Vice Mayor Graff, anything on what Sherry just mentioned?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dever, anything that you have?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Santos?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Steinbach?
You know I do. Um, sorry. So are you asking, so before you said it, in the absence of any questions, we're just going to leave this in there. Um, so I'll give you my concern, so units exceeding 2,500 are be required to provide attached ADU, in my opinion, absolutely not. Alternative to garages for less than 2,500 square feet. Absolutely not, unless there are some massive changes to what we require already for garages. Because we require covered parking. And. It isn't that easy to convert a garage to legally convert a garage to a dwelling unit. I know people do it all the time, just by sealing up the garage door. But there's a lot more to it than that, maybe changing the standards by which, or relaxing the standards by which garages are built. Would be a side one to that, but, and the density increase, I have no issue with that.
Okay, thank you, Bob, Commissioner Stevens?
I'm, just one, I'm confused, we're not going to require parking for residents. Um, or mandate parking for residents, but we want to add guest parking requirement? I'm, I'm just confused on that.
Yeah, well, Commissioner, that's, that's one of the questions that we're asking, because typically in our single family zone. We don't require guest parking when there's development of single family homes. However, if we happen to have oversized properties, and we have a few that might be, you know, 20, 30, 40,000 square feet in size. If they're able to get, you know, more than four units on the property, should we be asking for guest parking? Um, one example would be, in, in some cases with cities, if for like mixed use, you require one guest parking space for every four units. Maybe that's a standard that we could apply so that it's a one to four ratio. So at least there's some onsite parking, so if you have a guest that arrives and they can't find anything on the street, hopefully there might be at least one spot that they can park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brenda, and thank you, Sherry, for that, and then Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, I like, so staff, the, these, uh, policy considerations that you've listed, have they already been proposed? Did you get these from other city ordinances and have any of these been challenged?
Um, some of these are not the ones that we found in other ordinances. Because I think cities are really still trying to grapple with what to do with their low density neighborhoods. Uh, because again, SB9 just took effect in January, excuse me. So a lot of this is what we've come up with in terms of trying to balance the SB9 incentives. Versus something that might be a better form for Lamita. Um, and I think the real question is, what do you do about the ADUs? And it's not that we're trying And I think the real question is, what do you do about the ADUs? And it's not that we're trying to promote ADUs. Other than we recognize that there is more of an interest in multi-generational housing. And if we don't provide for the ADUs, a homeowners association cannot protect from somebody wanting to convert their garage. Because they'll have the right to do that, and you may end up losing parking within a planned development or a condominium.
Okay, there were several things that you suggested and not real clear on. I know what. Common area development and homeowners associations are, how can we make that a requirement so that the HOA? Will have more control over the ADUs? Or is that, is that possible?
It is possible. If we indicate that the multiple units. So anything that is taking advantage of the one to four thousand square foot ratio. And that I would probably say over, you know, three or more units, then we can require them to obtain an approval for a planned residential development. Once they do that, then, yeah, we can make sure that they have the CCNRs, the homeowners association and all that.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's good. And as to, going back to the ADUs and JADUs, the difference between. Minimum size, one hundred and fifteen and two twenty, two twenty would make it a bit more difficult. To have, to convert, say, a bedroom into an ADU or a garage into an ADU if it's two hundred and twenty square foot is not available. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, the garage is typically always around four hundred square feet. So if somebody wants to convert their garage into a JADU, that's pretty easy.
And the height requirement of sixteen feet would minimize a vertical building. So sixteen feet would be a better, and certainly open space requirement, if we're able to do that, that would certainly be. Again, my thought is, as to the proposed ordinance, and that's what we're talking about, that I'd like to make it. You know, to disincentivize as many, as much as possible to preserve the quality of life. Commissioner Steinbach, I think all of us, and I'm fairly certain that nearly everybody in the city, homeowners especially. You know, want to preserve our single-family residence and parking and quality of life that we had. When I ran for city council, that was a big deal, development. Everybody who lives here loves the way the city is now. And we've been talking about the tremendous state overreach, and virtually everybody I've talked to is really angry about it, but. Staff is correct, Sheri, you're correct. We have to deal with it, and the two-pronged approach I propose now. Making a resolution, the city join the fighting, the other cities, whether it be through COG, South Bay. COG, or whether it's just, I know there's existing lawsuits or lawsuits out there, they could pick one, join that, so we can say, hey. We're trying to tell the people of our city that the planning commission and the city council, the city is trying to, trying to fight this overreach one. I think that would be looked upon favorably, I know I would. And then the second of all, the second prong of the approach is to do what. What you're doing here, Sheri, and staff has been trying to do is, you know, draft these ordinances, so we can have some control that we're allowed. And press the limits on, press the limits as to what the state is allowing us now as planning commission to do. And so that's what I would like to, and I appreciate your tremendous amount of work that the staff has done. On drafting or giving us information on the proposed. Ordinance. But yeah, so, so I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that. What I'm coming from, you know, the two-pronged, two-pronged approach, recommend to the city council that they join the lawsuit, so we can. You know, tell our constituents and our neighbors, hey, we're doing something about it, we're fighting this thing. That state overreaches is not right. You know, there's going to be no parking, the quality of life in La Mida. If everybody starts building ADUs and bringing cars in. And not using transit, it's not going to go, will really decrease our quality of life. So we're going to fight that. In the meantime, we've got, we're adopting an ordinance to make it as, you know, legal within the law, make it as restrictive as possible to do this kind of stuff. That's, that's my thought. So thank you, Sheri. Appreciate your input there.
Thank you.
And then, so, Chair, I just want to briefly on the, on the challenge to SB nine ordinances. I'm not aware of any successful challenge, formal challenge to. Regulation such as the ones posited here, i.e., we're going to have an affordability requirement, we're going to have this eight hundred square foot maximum. What I have seen is that some potential issues with cities trying to declare their entire jurisdiction, you know. Protected habitat for species, therefore we're exempt from SB nine. So that is, so yeah, so what we're doing here in terms of. I haven't seen it. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with Commissioner Thompson, the two-pronged approach is good. And the. Restrictions on our ordinances. Then I just, then I agree with that, just to support that as a position. I think that, that I have another question for Sheri. And any of the developers that are listening to, if they want to answer. Excuse me, with regards to A1 and R1, on the multiple unit development. I like what I'm hearing about these. Individual developments of the larger pieces of property. Have Sheri have, have the developers that you've been having discussions with, and you said you have been. Are, are they supportive of our approach? Are they helping us to. Preserve the La Mida community with their thoughts and with what you're doing? What kind of comments are they having with regard how we can, how we can do that? On the A1, R1 preservation, or I mean, preserving the community?
Well, Commissioner Graff, to be quite candid, we've only had discussions with really a handful of developers. And for the most part, what I'm hearing is that the properties are incredibly expensive, so it's difficult for them to do it in any assembly. But to the extent that they can have reliance and comfort that the city has a, a strong direction of what they want to see. That helps them understand what they can pay for property and ultimately deliver something that will get approved by the city. But I think probably some of the folks that are on the phone tonight, they might be better at kind of explaining their own perspective.
Thank you.
All right, so with that being said, let me just ask. Sheri, if I'm understanding this correctly, because I think we've. Gone through a lot tonight, and, and the question simply is, is that apparently back on April fifth, the council. Extended ordinance number eight thirty-two U for an additional ten months of fifteen days. To allow for the development of these regulations to be incorporated into the La Mida municipal code. That's the first comment. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And if I can just add one more thing, because this is just, I guess, a question of what may be in your future. I'm not sure how much longer I will be with the city of La Mida providing consulting. So certainly by the end of June, but after that, it may be non-existent or it may be fairly limited. So my goal is to try to get as much of the heavy lifting done as we can, you know, between now and the next hearing. It doesn't mean that the commission has to complete its process by that point, but I'm just trying to make sure that most of the things that we can and should discuss. That we've got those on the table.
Okay, and I, and I, and I understand that a hundred percent. So with that being said, I, I believe also the goal tonight was for the commission to at least conduct the workshop, which we've done. At a direct staff to schedule a public hearing. So with that being said, it seems to me the logical next step would be not to. Make any final decisions tonight because we really can't, but actually to. Direct staff to schedule the public hearing, and then perhaps after that public hearing, bring it back to the commission, since we've got ten months extension on this. Emergency ordinance eight thirty-two U, so that we're not trying to push ourselves up against a wall to make any final decisions tonight or next month. I think. That the public hearing would be a next step to do, as far as I'm concerned. So am I correct in that statement as well?
For the most part, I mean, the public hearing for the planning commission would be in June. And to the extent that, you know, you can reach some decisions, you know, and actually recommend an ordinance to the council. Then we would forward that recommendation sooner rather than later, because remember, at this point, we have to comply with the ADU laws. We do have the interim ordinance for SB nine, which will be in place for at least another ten months. But, you know, we're trying to get this all wrapped up so that it makes some cohesive sense to everybody. There's nothing to say too, that even when you have your public hearing in June, you don't have to continue it to July. So if you needed another week or another two weeks. You can have additional meetings as a planning commission. But I would encourage you to try to do it sooner rather than wait to the end of the urgency ordinance to complete your process.
Right, because that's only on forty-five days from February, if I'm not mistaken, is that right?
It's, yes, ten months, fifteen days from April, April fifth.
Right, but the, but, yeah, that's the emergency ordinance, but the SB nine, I believe that was, well, that, that was extended. In April, so that's why I mentioned, okay.
Right, right. So we're, we're at least covered for SB nine, but most of the permits we're getting are for ADUs.
Right, right, right. So what we probably should do is have somebody, unless you guys are done with your, I mean, if you have more for a presentation, if not. We can certainly ask the lone developer who's on the line to comment. I don't know whether he wants to or not, because. You know, I don't know, we have to ask.
Right, or in chair, i- i- if we are going to allow one public comment, we should open up to anyone else.
That's what I was going to say. With that being said, I was about to say, if we have one, we should open up to everybody, but he's the only one on the, on the call right now. So. Does, does anybody have any further comments from the commission as to, we want to open this up to public comment, or do we want to just go ahead and have somebody make a motion? To either do the two-pronged approach that we talked about and or, and or make the motion to direct staff for the. Public hearing, because again, I can echo Bob's sentiments, and I can echo Jim, and I've said this before. Staff has done a fabulous job of putting this together, and unfortunately, as I said earlier, the state trying to shove it down everyone's throat. Puts us in a position of saying, either take it or fight it with some of these, you know, changes and considerations that you put up on the. On the screen tonight. So with that said, does anybody on the commission have any? Motion they'd like to make?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, before you do that, can we just confirm whether or not Ricky Delarosa or Luigi would like to comment, because it is a public meeting. So let's find out if they would like to comment first.
I was getting to that by asking the commissioners if they had any other questions, and then I was going to say, let's open up the public comments. We have, you know, Luigi and Ricky on there.
Yeah. Okay, Luigi and Ricky, this is your chance.
Let me just, no, they're both on there. So for those two. People that are on the phone, holding Luigi and Ricky, we're going to open this up to public comment, so if you'd like to say anything, please go ahead and. Unmute yourself, and you've got the floor for a few minutes, please. If they're still there, if they've just walked away from their screen, oh, Luigi, okay, go ahead. Luigi, did you, do you have any comments? Hello? I see you've unmuted yourself. Luigi, you're still there? Okay.
His mic might may not be working.
Okay, Ricky, can you unmute yourself if you have any comments or questions? Let me, let me ask, Linda, can you put a quick note in the chat to Luigi to see if he sees that real quick? To the fact that we're open to a public comment?
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, I would, I would like to reiterate to Sheri. I know she said they would, but to get us a hard copy of the presentation that they presented tonight. It does a good summary and allow us to, to cut through some of this pretty. Pretty much, you know, much easier. So if we could request that, Sheri, please.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I believe Linda has sent the message to both Luigi and Ricky to unmute themselves. We'll give them another minute. If not, then I think we should move forward.
Hi, good evening.
Oh, there we go.
Hi, this is Ricky Delarosa. I just saw. Yeah, you know, I mean, I've worked with Sheri for many years, and she's a very, very astute planner. And I think everything that she discussed in terms of how to respond to what the state is doing. Is, you know, being presented in the best-case scenario, you know, in terms of limiting the size, providing the parking and the open space. And these are things that I think that in terms of the architectural aspect are, are guidelines. That could, I think, enhance or even keep the development as close to single-family quality. As, as intended.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. That's.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of Ricky, because I haven't seen Ricky in years. Hi, in fact, I still can't see you, because you don't have.
Video.
Yeah, but, but I do have a question as it relates to including the ADUs into the primary unit. Because I know that's kind of a novel approach, and not all developers want to do that. But it does seem to me that there is vulnerability with future homeowner associations being subjected to ADU conversions. So what is your recommendation specifically to ADUs? How difficult is it to incorporate ADUs into the design?
Well, I mean, if you're plotting them within the one to four thousand square foot lots. That's as close to standard lot size as you can. If it meets the modules of the parking and then the livable space at the front. It's easily workable. The idea is, I mean, all this is really is. Changing the label from, you know, the in-law unit, which, you know, we provided in a lot of the developments. But this is more like a luxury in-law unit, because it has to be about four hundred square feet. Within the ground floor, it just eats up a lot of the ground floor square footage. So then, you know, it kind of requires. You know, you to be a little more creative and putting the additional square footages in the second or even the third floor. And, and the key is, the key is, and what you alluded to, is in trying to maintain the open space. And minimizing the lot coverage as well. So I'm not sure how, what the sentiment is about going. Three floors, but maybe not a full three floors, maybe a partial three floor, like we've done in other developments. And that seems to work, as long as you just do it smartly.
Right, thank you. And Linda, can you correct your screen, please?
I just was actually sending her a message to ask her what's on her screen.
Right, we're seeing kind of a table of names and information. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, Ricky, thank you for your comments. Luigi, have you been able to join us? I have no idea what happened. He did unmute himself, but now I don't know where he's at.
Well, I'm sure he can follow us, follow up with us later, though, because at least he's heard the conversation.
Yeah, okay. Well, that brings us back to where I was at a few minutes ago. So if that's it, then I guess I would close the public comment. Bring it back to the commission for any decisions. So does anybody have any more comments or questions? If not, I guess I would call for some motion here. From the commission?
I don't really know how to, how to phrase it, but if we send it to, kind of way. To move it to the public hearing phase. And then come back to this, when we've had time to process it.
Correct, and Sheri, feel free to interrupt me. You know, of course, tonight, you guys are bound by any decision tonight. This is not. The purpose of tonight was for staff to try to get some level of guidance. So when we bring it back for the public hearing. You know, we are at least in the ballpark. That being said, the public hearing, everyone could change their minds, and you guys could do a one-eighty, and that's totally within your, within your purview. And so kind of what we're looking for tonight is, once again, very kind of generic. Um, and so kind of the, the, what we're looking for tonight is once again, very kind of generic direction. I've heard some ideas about kind of the, the two-pronged approach. I, I've taken some notes, Sherry, I'm not sure i- if you have as well, if there's any specific policy details or any, you know, unresolved question you're, you're, you're dying to, to get direction to. But, but if not, that that's kind of what we're looking for.
I think Commissioner Thompson stated it, what I thought to be, excuse me, pretty, pretty much what I thought should be. And, you know, being an attorney, he can probably restate that much better than I can. You care to try, Jim?
Oh, yeah. Vice Chair Graff, I recognize Commissioner Thompson's comments about doing a two-pronged approach, which I mentioned earlier. So with that being said, what I would like to do is ask for a motion. Commissioner Thompson is probably poised to do that unless there's any other comments from anybody else.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a motion that the La Mita Plan Commission recommend to the city council that the city of La Mita join an existing lawsuit with other cities opposing SB nine.
And then, and, and sorry, I, I apologize for, I just wanted to make sure because, because tonight, that, you know, we, we didn't really have that on the, on the agenda, that, that resolution will come back at a, at a future meeting to the planning commission along with the, with the, with the ordinances.
And actually, for clarification, I'm not sure if we need to have a resolution for that. I think simply having something in the minutes that indicates the planning commission has concern and is requesting the city council to, to look at that issue and that opportunity for joining litigation. I, I think we can probably just do that by having it in the minutes tonight, even though it wasn't formally on the agenda. It is directly related.
Yeah, and, and I, and I recognize what Commissioner Thompson made as a motion that we should just simplify that to just, as you said, incorporate that in tonight's meeting minutes. And I mentioned earlier today or tonight that it would be prudent for the city to explore and potentially enjoin that lawsuit. So I know that's not on the agenda and we can't really discuss that part of it, but we can certainly just keep it in the minutes.
Certainly, and then maybe put it on, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Correct. So with that being said, so really, as I mentioned earlier, tonight, the staff is asking the commission to conduct the workshop, which we've done, and then also direct staff to schedule the public hearing for June thirteenth. So I guess that's the motion at this point. Recognizing all of the hard work that Sherry and her staff have done with some suggestions and changes.
Chair Camerata, what I, what I was referring to with Commissioner Thompson was his second approach with regard to the information that was presented tonight and, and framing what we would like to see them bring back to us at the next meeting.
Correct. And I, and I acknowledge that Commissioner Thompson's comments are basically spot on. So thank you for that, Vice Chair Graff. So with that said, yeah, with that said, there's a motion on the floor, and I believe Commissioner Santos just seconded that. Is there any other comments or questions on the motion? And perhaps maybe Commissioner Thompson could restate that second half of that motion, because we already know what we're doing about the other half with regards to enjoining the lawsuit and exploring the possibility thereof. Jim, go ahead and unmute yourself. Jim, unmute yourself.
Second, I'm sorry, the second, second problem would be to recommend the staff to, one, have scheduled the next meeting to be an open meeting for the public. And also at that, before that meeting, draft a proposed ordinance to include the policy considerations set forth on tonight, with the exception of I would leave out the, as Commissioner Steinbach said, the units exceeding twenty-five hundred be required to provide attached ADU. I think that was one. And have a rough draft of an ordinance with these policy considerations, make the minimum of two hundred twenty-five, two hundred twenty square feet on ADU, maximum height of sixteen feet with open space and tree requirements, et cetera, set forth in the policy considerations.
Okay, is that clear? Is that clear to everybody? Okay, so I think there's still a second on the table. So the motion was by Commissioner Thompson, and the second is going to be by Commissioner Santos. Is there any more comments or question on that motion? If not, Madam Deputy City Clerk, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
Chair Camerata?
Yes.
So to be sure I'm clear, though, the motion is, is really just the second part of that. The first is just something reflecting in the minutes that.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Sherry, does that, does that satisfy you as well?
That gives us enough direction. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Okay, we are done with that, and I do apologize that developer Luigi was not able to join us, but I do appreciate his architect's comments from Ricky De La Rosa. So thank you. So I think we're on item number eight, communications regarding city council actions. And I don't know who's going to take this. Is that you, Sherry, or is that Laura or?
Yeah, we don't really have anything to report other than the CIP, which we already have on the agenda.
Okay, very good. Number nine, project status updates. I believe we were asking for a, if I'm not mistaken, a printed copy so we can keep track of it. So perhaps maybe at the next meeting, we can have that. Unless there's some update you want to give us now.
Yeah, Laura, do you have any updates?
Um. I will at the next meeting because two things are on the verge.
Right.
I guess I could say that the eight units next to the sheriff's station has pulled its grading and foundation permit. And then there's another project that is looking to come to final map that you've, but it still has a few things to work out. I will get these things in writing to you on past projects that are about to be starting more activity.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Item ten, staff announcements.
I will announce that the city has formally opened up the community development director position, so they're seeking candidates. So if you know of any good folks out there, make sure they apply. I think it's going to take a number of months and hopefully we'll be able to get a, a very good director here. Secondly, the June meeting is likely going to be a very busy meeting because we have a number of things we're trying to get on the agenda to make sure that, I guess I'm here to make sure that there's enough information to provide for the commission. So do expect that it probably will be, you know, maybe a nine o'clock meeting for next, to next June. And that's all I've got.
Okay, so the next item, item number eleven is planning commissioner items. Let's start off, Vice Chair Graff, anything?
Uh, yes, in line with what, excuse me, was Sherry had just said. It was very difficult with what we had tonight to be able to have time to review. We requested this before, and I want to request it again, that we start receiving our packages on Wednesday to allow a sufficient time. We have weekends where we're busy and have things to do and can't spend all of our time, the whole weekend, to review these, review these projects and, and everything on there. So I'm again requesting that we go back to what we used to have where we get our, where we get our packages for the meeting on the Wednesday before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Graff. Commissioner Dever, anything?
Yes. Is there any information on a market? There was talk at one time, it was close or whatever.
Are you talking at Pacific Coast Highway in Narbonne?
Yeah, yes.
There will be a public announcement very soon. They are just in lease negotiations for a user of the property. It's not a complete full-service grocery store, but I think it's something the commission and the community will definitely like. So stay tuned, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and that sports bar is by the Good Life River that we approved them a long time ago, and then the pandemic hit. Are they remodeling or doing anything?
I'll let Laura comment.
Great question, Monica. Thank you so much. So their entitlement expires on, actually tomorrow, they would have to apply for their extension. We have talked to the property owner who's co-applicant, and they are not feeling that the return on investment would be worthwhile because the cost to create a restaurant there is, is expensive, and they are looking at other options.
Okay, thank you.
But they may tomorrow apply. We have let them know. I mean.
Call me, okay?
I, I will know definitively next, next commission meeting.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Monica, anything else? Those are three good items. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Santos?
No, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinbach?
Uh, yeah, real quickly, I'd like to apologize to the commission for my non-attendance at the last meeting. It was, I hate to say, just unavoidable. It was a last minute unavoidable, and I couldn't even make contact someday offline. If anybody wants to know, I'll tell you. But I do apologize to those of you that know me, I don't miss meetings. So maybe you lucked out by not having me complain about something. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And yes, we did miss you. So just so you know, we were concerned, but thank you for that. Commissioner Stevens?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, one quick one. Back to the grocery store at PCH and Narbonne. That parking lot was formerly, that's incorrect, was formerly owned by several people. And has that issue been resolved? It's all but, it's all under one ownership now?
That is correct. Yeah, the entity that owns the large building now owns the parking lot.
Okay, good, good. That's, that's.
That helps a lot.
Yes, okay, thank you so much.
Oh, good. That is good news. Okay. Item number twelve. If you're following along with our program here, commissioners to attend city council meetings. So first one is June seventh. Second, June twenty-first. Do I have any volunteers?
I can give the seven.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And June twenty-first, anybody available for that one?
Ah, come on, guys.
Let's go. I just need one of you. And I guess maybe I asked the question, are they back in full swing for in-person or are they still hybrid?
No, they're in person.
As I say, they're meeting in person. I think they have one council member who may be still doing Zoom, but otherwise they're going back in person.
Okay. But, but they're called hybrid meetings because of that.
Right, right, right. I figured. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So that twenty-first of June.
I'll take the twenty-first.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Santos.
And on, on that issue, I'm, I'm just set to attend the, the next city council meeting. Is that, are they, they meeting at the city hall now, you say?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Okay, well, that brings us to the big question for us tonight, not that we've had a lot to worry about or talk about. Item number thirteen, discussion of hybrid meetings, which we continued from last month. So now is the chance to spill out your thing, your thoughts on this. So let's start off with Vice Chair Graff.
I'm in favor of going back in person.
Okay, so let me just make a note here. Hold on, in person. So, okay. Vice, Vice Chair Graff says in person. All right, Commissioner Dever?
Yeah, I'm in person, too. I like to see the people. I'm tired of all these electronics doing weird stuff.
Commissioner Santos?
I could go either way, but I I'll go in person.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach?
Um. I'm going to say hybrid for two reasons. One, I travel a lot, so I can still attend meetings, which is great. The other, the other thing is, the news, the city newsletter comes out and it says that we're still observing all the COVID protocols in city hall, but yet we're meeting in person and I'm, or, or we're talking about meeting in person. I'm trying to, curious what message that sends.
Um, just actually for city hall, while we have screens available at the public counter, the staff is no longer wearing masks. So we are having in-person meetings with applicants.
Maybe we need to adjust the newsletter.
Yeah, it does send a conflicting message because when you're in the chambers, typically speaking, you're spaced out on the diocese and the people that are in audience are a little bit far away. So.
Well, it's easy to space out when there's only five of you.
Don't, don't, Sherry, don't they still have the plastic up?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, the plastic detectors are still up.
Okay, that answers that.
Okay. Anything more, Bob, on that or no?
No, that's, I, I, I vote hybrid.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens?
I'm in person.
Okay, and Commissioner Thompson?
Okay, we're going back to city hall in person.
Was that, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd be in favor of going back to city hall as well. We don't know how long this sort of halftime is going to happen for the pandemic, but I think it, it's well worth getting back into person meetings. So. Okay, well, then with that, Patrick, I'm going to defer to you real quickly. Do we have to vote on this tonight? Just as a discussion, doesn't have a vote on here.
Well, yeah, sure. So I mean, so to answer your question, to, to, to make any, the, the planning commission, and it's, it can govern itself, that, that's vested in you by the, by the municipal code. So if you, if you guys want to make that call, I did want to, I, I didn't have a question from Madam City Clerk. I know you said that the city council, they're still doing hybrid, correct, in that a, a, a council member as well as the public can participate via both ways. They can do it via virtually, via Zoom or call in and then also show up.
Yes, and actually, the, the intention of this discussion was really just to see, we're, I would love to have all the commissioners back in person. But I think at least for now, just to sort of echo how the council's doing it and to allow for participation for members of the public who may still be cautious that, you know, we'll, we'll do these as hybrids. But, but that still means planning commissioners come on in. And eventually we'll probably, or maybe get rid of that part of it.
I just wanted to be sure that because I, I, I do think there is value and it is advisable to maintain consistency throughout that. So if someone wants to come to a planning commission meeting, it's not entirely different than the city council meeting and kind of, you know, vice versa. And so, so Madam City Clerk, the, the, is the, are, are the chambers and, and city staff there, they're willing and able for, let's say, next meeting to, to host the, the planning commissioners in, in person?
Yes, absolutely. And we have a, an employee who, who works the Zoom or the sort of the.
The cameras.
Video.
The cameras in the, in the chamber. So I had alerted him even a few months ago that we, that we were going to be talking about this soon. So I'll let him know.
Got it. And to the chair, yeah, I mean, so the, the only thing that we would, I think, really need to do is, is, is basically update the agenda to add that, that, that attend in person option.
Hybrid, okay.
Yeah, and so.
That makes sure we have enough chairs.
Yeah, well, so, so it, it, it brings me back to the next meeting being the public hearing for what we just talked about tonight, maybe for SB nine and, and all those issues. So that would probably be a better venue to have people come to a meeting in person as to try and do this on Zoom.
Agreed. I agree.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we've got one, two, three, four, five, including myself, six, and then Bob is hybrid because of his travel schedule. So it sounds like we'll go to in-person for the June meeting then.
But, but what's, yeah, now it'll be, there will be an in-person option along with the, the virtual. But but what's in, yeah, now it'll be, there will be an in-person option along with the the virtual.
Do we need to take a formal vote on that?
No, we do not.
Okay.
So Bob can stay hibernated there at his house.
Unless you want to fly in on your private jet, Bob.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, with that said, I believe we're at the last item, which is adjournments.
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So. So moved. Second.
Hey, well, with that being said, I do want to thank everybody for their time tonight. It went a little bit longer than I think everyone might have expected, but we did make progress. And the next meeting will be scheduled as a hybrid meeting for Monday, June 13th at 6 o'clock, both in chambers and on the Zoom platform. And with with that said, motion to to adjourn has been made and seconded. So meeting is hereby adjourned at 8:51.
Thank you, staff, we look forward to seeing you in the next, next month in person.
Thank you, I look forward to actually seeing everybody.
Linda, 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 bring cookies, though.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Have a good evening.